So be in with our budget update. Michelle.
Thank you Chair Watson and members of the Budget Committee that are able to be here in person. Hopefully we'll have some joining online as well. And thank you for our tech team for getting our presentation going. It's gonna look very, very familiar. I try to use the same format year to year. So as we are coming back together, there's this sense of that you've seen some of this information before and it should be very normalized and familiar to you. How close are we guys to having another?
Yes, sorry.
This is the first of two Budget Committee develop Budget Development Sessions that we will have prior to proposing the budget. And last year we had additional contacts as well. It's fairly regular. And so it will be a little bit different this year as we have other things that we're focusing on as well, including our strategic plan and our search for our new superintendent. So just reminder, our Budget Committee was invited and are actually through all of our meetings, but specifically the ones in our Budget Updates. Our Budget Committee members are, as we're moving ahead, Dawn Wallace, Michael Smith, Christine Wonberg, Stephanie Condor, and Ian King. Stephanie and Ian are new to the Budget Committee. We still have two vacancies. And so to that end, we're gonna reopen our application window through February 17. So we're still searching for additional members that we can bring in prior to proposing our budget. And that will give us time to bring them in for orientation prior to our next Budget Update. We have Dawn, Christine, and Michael online. Welcome you guys. I can't see you, but thank you for making time to be here tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us.
All right, so advance please. All right, so typically my presentations will start with an agenda slide that talks about what you can expect to see here tonight. We're gonna talk a little bit about the Budget Development Process at a fairly high level. Our current year budget status, so kind of a deeper dive than what you would normally share during a board's regular session. And we're gonna take a look by major fund at our preliminary outlook for general funds, special revenues, debt service, and our capital projects fund. And then because we are in full legislative session this year, we're gonna be talking about some legislative setting that we're doing. Last year, we were able to spend additional time because it was a legislative short session and we knew what our state school fund appropriation was for the second year of the biennium. We were able to focus a little bit deeper on the funds and how each one of them are used. So for anyone who wants a recap of that, it is recorded. Thank you Rose, and I'm happy to share links and with the marks and everything to get that information to you here. Truly am interested in finding more. All right, this year is really gonna be focused on our different funds and then specifically called out in our next session will be student investment account and our remaining SIR funds as we go into this year. All right, please advance. So this is a slide that I use periodically about the Budget Development Process. So right now we're engaging the community in our discussions. We're bringing information forward. Again, just like you're gonna hear about our current year updates and then outlook. Our Budget Committee meeting is actually gonna be April 25th. It's gonna be a fairly big meeting as far as my understanding. But for us, Jeff and I will be proposing our budget document. Superintendent Scott will be delivering the budget message. And then we may or may not be able to move to approval by the committee at that meeting. Once the budget is approved, it'll move to a budget hearing and adoption, which happens on June 20th. And then of course, we'll begin implementation on July 1st. All right, please advance. So our current year budget status, super high level. Our general fund, all of our funds are on target and within appropriations according to our monitoring. Our general fund, we share monthly cash flows and a quarterly interest earnings statement for to board to review. So that's online for our committee and committee large actually that wanna read those. Our special revenue funds, they're steady. Our federal programs, so Title I, migrant IDBIA, and those other federal programs are steady this year and on target under appropriations. Our SIR funds, we had this year, we have spent out our SIR I and our SIR II funds and will be well into our SIR III funds and we'll get into that a little bit further into the presentation. Our state grants, we have recently come into some fairly major state grants. So the high school success, also known as Measure 98, we anticipate will be fully funded moving ahead. Our student investment account, again, even those, those are driven by student enrollment. We anticipate that they would be fairly flat and aligned with what the state is doing as far as preliminary allocations. So the reason I'm mentioning that here is because any fluctuation in there is gonna impact our staffing and we would have to like we make some adjustments in our general fund if those major grants come in under what we're projecting. And then nutrition services, there's quite a shift happening within the nutrition services budget because throughout the COVID period, all students ate for free. And that made a big difference in the revenue side of the equation for student services and they were able to accumulate a little bit of a fund balance. And you'll see in this proposed budget that that's kind of being spent down as we have moved back to paid bunches this year. Finally, we have capital projects. So we are coming to the last bit of our major projects under our bond. That was approved by owners in 2017. And so you'll see that both in our upcoming budget proposal and also in our longer term projections. That's just kind of flatten out until when we, as a community, decide to maybe look at passing another thought. Okay, any questions so far? I'm just charging right through this. Charger it. All right, and I keep going. We have a lot to cover tonight. So this is the accelerated learning plan that we developed for this year with a focus on using up the remaining SIR I and II funds and then starting up to SIR III. Each one of those funds have been very particular in what they can be spent on and how we have to apply for them and how we can access them through the Oregon Department of Education. Those rules continue to change. But as far as we are looking at programming in HSD, we have an understanding that under the accelerated learning plan, the items that are currently funded under SIR III are temporary in nature because the funds are temporary in nature. So these tend to be kind of supplemental extensions of student supports and some operating items in here. So I'm not gonna read them. I know it's here for your reference if you'd like to. I'm gonna thank Board Member Ward for like going through this and really asking some good questions about what does that mean? What does that mean? And we were able to bring that forward. So yeah, pretty comprehensive list. This was reviewed at our Budget Development Session last year. And I just wanted to bring it back here for us today. All right. So our preliminary outlook is we're starting to dig into that 2324 budget. We're at the first year of the biennium, we're kind of have our eyes set on being balanced at the end of the second year. So because the state appropriates funding for us on a two-year basis, we can anticipate based on the steady increase of costs, what we need for that biennial period. Some of the things that impact that are staffing adjustments that may happen due to changes in enrollment or student demographics or caseloads. So we tend to match those and staff up and down accordingly. And that's just good HR management and a good cost control for us as well. Also because a lot of our programs, including the state school fund, is a revenue that's driven on a per-student basis. It's important that those things are matching. So any staffing adjustments that we anticipate having at this time, we will able to address through attrition. There won't be any reductions enforced or anything like that. There's not any planned reductions in staffing. salaries and benefits, we're currently kind of projecting those out. They are, for the first year of the biennium, they have been negotiated. We have hard in agreements for those with both licensed and classified staff. So really it's that second year of the biennium that's kind of questionable, but we'll go on some historical terms and project out future costs for salary benefits. For services, we have a 4% annual increase in utilities, fuel subs, and all of our other service agreements. We all know that they may be higher or lower than that. What we're experiencing is a higher cost, but a lower ability to like get services in place. So they're just harder to comply. So we're looking at our standard 4% annual increase. The same for supplies. We're also anticipating that we'll have the same number of school calendar contract days that we currently have. If there's any change in that up and down, it will significantly impact the budget if we negotiate to add a day or if for any reason we need to reduce a day. That tends to be a big impact on the budget. We do have in-person instruction all year, including activities. And that may sound like, oh, of course, why would it be otherwise? But as we experienced the pandemic, there were very different levels of activity and models of instruction that impacted our budget as well. And again, our capital project fund is winding down and you'll see that in our overall budget projections. All right. So here's probably the biggest theme here to be planted tonight. And that's about our biennium budgeting contingency plan. So as we're looking at that two-year period and wanting to be balanced at the end of it, there are some things that we need to consider. So the summer learning programs, those have been funded by the state the last two years and they have been extremely robust because of those specific grants. We will know about that programming until at least mid-March if the state's gonna offer anything there. We are currently leaving the leadership team working on a review and revision of our accelerated learning plan, which identifies both our student investment account expenditures and our SIR III expenditures. And the difference being student investment account, we anticipate to be ongoing. It should align with our strategic plan. And the SIR III is ends September 30th, 2024. And so we have some flexibility there on what to do with it. So since we don't know what our state school fund budget level is gonna be yet and we might not know until the end of session, we're anticipating the governor's recommended budget to come out the next couple of weeks. But usually there's some push-pull at the legislature, a lot of advocacy to move that current service level number upwards, which is our state school fund level of funding. And that is the biggest part of our operating budget. And so the next slide, we're gonna look at bridging the gap at different levels. So currently, this looks kind of familiar because we did a similar exercise last year. But we were using student investment account to bridge the cap, the gap for things that we wanted to do to do that would be ongoing. For this time, we're looking at the potential of filling just a two-year gap with the remaining SIR funds that we have. So as we move into next year, anticipate having about $15 million of the SIR III funds available. And you can see moving from left to right, different levels of state school funding. So currently from Legislative Fiscal Office and DAS sent over to the governor's office has been a number of $9.5 billion for Oregon for K-12 for the state school fund. And at that level of funding, you can see that we would use all of our remaining SIR dollars and we would still have an $8.8 million gap likely to be absorbed or adjusted to in the second year of the biennium. So again, we're looking at having that stability for as long as possible within our system. And I can't see behind Francesca, but I have a note here too. At 9.75, we are looking at spending $450,000 of our SIR funds in building up again that fund balance in our operating budget so that we can have the same level of service in both years at the biennium. And that would leave us just $550,000 of the SIR III remaining for investments in the accelerated learning plan. And it continues to move that way. As you can see at 10.0 and 10.2, what that would mean for us in terms of budgeting. So if miraculously, we receive the 10.2, which is the HSD current service level number, we would have $15 million to spend in SIR III as supplemental onetime cost, which is what it was intended from the federal government. Are there any questions about this slide?
Yes, yeah. So in conversations with constituents, the budget, especially since legislative sessions happen, is one of the things I get asked about the most. Sometimes I think I have it buttoned down after reading all the materials and then someone asks a question just a certain way and I start to question, well, have I got this turned around? So just to make sure, on a broad philosophical level, the SSF and the SIR were both meant to be supplemental to core operating duties to provide additional services. There was a theory behind it, right?
So the SSF is state school fund and that is the core operating budget. Student investment account?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that was initially intended to be a supplement. And then SIR was this wild shot of pail Mary funding from the Fed that came in during the COVID period, the American Rescue Plan dollars. And in Hillsborough, we were fortunate to receive more on a like per-student basis than a law district. We've been fairly conservative with it over the period, making it last as long as we can to potentially help us out here.
Okay, that's what I'd been explaining to folks. And I sort of, and so what we're looking at here is the, both the SIR and some of the other state-specific supplemental to the core school fund. We're looking at, there are certain things that we could do if the core funding is what we believe it needs to be. But if it's not, then we're going to be looking today or somewhat future about what sorts of things we would be not doing to go beyond core service levels if we have to use some supplemental funding for the core services.
Correct.
I'm not sure I articulated that clearly, thank you.
Yeah, well, and we've spent a lot of time as a district talking about the difference between student investment account being a permanent resource for us and the types of things that we want to have in there are more permanent in nature. They're ongoing and need sustaining. SIR funds tend to be year at a time. Early on, we used them as a lot of safety and operational measures as we were kind of addressing different types of services during the COVID pandemic. But as we move forward, like I said, we moved further and further away from the crisis and now there's a little bit more flexibility here for us what we can do with funds for.
Also to back up as you were saying, last year we were having this conversation. The bigger conversation was understanding what really does it need to say current service level? What we came away with is probably the SIR, right? Because the children are at another need now. Current service level don't get us where we need to be. They're wrong, they're old, and they need what we've done. And so if we are only at our current service level, we're still, and our children are still. So please know, we had that conversation and it's very good. And it's a startling reality when someone can tell us, oh, just state your current service level and their children are suffering the trauma and the country is suffering. I just want to be shared of it.
Yeah, no, I know there's a bill in the legislature that's gonna be looked at this year about changing how CSL is evaluated because of concerns that school works after three years. So I'm like.
Karen, can we go back to slide five on the back? Sorry. No, actually, that's a great point. If we can look at one more. One more. Maybe we passed it, no, this way. So if we were to spend any time looking at this in detail, you can see some of the operational things like additional custodial hours, enhanced H-back and filtering for our air quality. A lot of the other stuff is those supports that we needed that are like we anticipate that our kids will be served and that the escalated services of these things that are being provided may be less. So this was an excellent version of how SIR funds were intended to be used. We were able to use those. I think the challenge for us with the student investment account was that for two years in a row, that that, you know, helped us provide stability with our general fund as well.
So for the next two years, the budget we're talking about, we're able to use SIR funds to fill some of the gaps in the state school fund. Does that give us a chance to target our SIA funds differently?
Potentially. If we were funded at a level that's above 10.2, we could potentially do that. But I would again caution us, anything that we're doing with, I'm sorry, Karen, can we go back?
Yeah, go back to the graph one. Right, so the, this does not involve using SIA funds, which is what we have traditionally done? Or are we just baking in the fact that, there we're gonna have to use?
That's correct. We just have to remember that SIR funds are gone as of September 2024.
We're working on two-year budget and that's what we got, right?
Yeah. I would be worried to bring something that is need-sustaining out of student investment account and pay for it with SIR funds.
Right.
Yeah.
But this graph is not using SIA to fill general fund holes at this point?
Correct.
Which is what we have traditionally done?
Yeah. Yeah. At this point, SIA is being fully utilized, so we wouldn't be able to.
But for the current budget, that's how we'd use SIA was oftentimes to fill gaps in general fund hole. So is this, is this graph assuming we're gonna continue to do that? Okay, so, right, so this, this wasn't what I hoped it was.
Well, I apologize. I thought it was really great.
Right, like I, I was not calling out the, oftentimes we've seen this version of the graph where it showed how we would use SIA funds to fill in gaps in general fund. But we're already assuming that that's happening.
Right, right. And that kind of went by quickly in a previous slide where it was like, we're assuming that those are stable and they are being fully utilized. We are gonna be reviewing them and seeing if there are any changes needs to be made within that grant. But right now, we're not assuming that it will increase in a way that would offset any of the budget gap that we're looking at.
But even at 10.2, I guess maybe in 10, we wouldn't have to use so many SIA funds to fill in holes. I get, so next on, do we see a graph that shows the same thing but with another color indicating how many SIA funds are accounted for in the gray color?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
I will say there's a, there's a definition for how SIA funds can be used and where.
Where combined.
Just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, I know it's not the message we want to send, sale or whatever, but everybody, it's a little dirty secret that everybody knows is happening, but we don't, people wanna talk about it.
And I think that part of the reason I, I asked the question is, I, you know, we who volunteer in our schools, children or nephews or community members in schools see that there's this real need and see where our schools can be doing even more if we had more resources. So we see that reality. But when I, I just, I had lunch with the dean of the School of Education at Pacific University and was talking about breaking those stuff. And he was saying, you know, he meets with legislators, they ask, you know, we're confused about how districts are using their SIR funds and why they're using the SIA funds a certain way. And so I think that we're getting some pushback even from people who are very in the know about school funding, about why our funding model is the way it is. And we want to communicate the reality that we're seeing that we need more resources or we see what the personal resources would make. So that's why I want to make sure I'm being good articulating that well when I think of folks.
QEM at 11.1.
Yeah, 11.8.
11.8. So the state itself says we should be funding at 11.8. So anything below that is a shortfall. We'll go from there.
Okay, Christine, I see you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I, I think I need a little bit of a reminder. So last year, I think one of the things we had talked about was, I think we were either in the last year or this year was gonna be the last year of our pension bonds. And I'm trying to remember which, which was the situation. We, I don't think we had too much further to go before those bonds were paid off. Can you remind me what the situation with that was?
Yeah, I can provide, I need to verify it. I think I go a little bit longer, like probably 29. I don't have them forecasted to drop off anytime soon.
Oh, really? Cause I, I thought they were forecasted to drop off fairly soon. So, so yeah, I mean, if we could get an update about that. And I guess I was wondering about how our, how our pension obligation for PERS is potentially going for next year.
Actually, the increase to our pension obligation is only, it's less than 1%.
Okay, okay, nice.
There were, yeah, there were fairly good returns on the actuarial period that they use to, you know, calculate those rates for employers. So ours is going up less than 1% for the biennium.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, it's based at first.
Oh, that's great news. Thank you.
All right. Forget it. Okay, our next steps, we have another Budget Development Update and that's when I'm gonna do some revisions to my Gold Star slide. And then also bring forward our accelerated learning plan, which will identify our proposed student investment account investments for, it's gonna be just over $15 million there. And also our contingency plan for SIR funds. So that you're gonna see at whatever level of state school fund we get, we will have a plan in place to respond to that for being balanced for the two-year period. And then on the 25th of April, we'll have our Budget Committee meeting. We'll propose the budget. Michael will give his budget message. Superintendent Scott will give a budget message. We will have potential approval and then moving towards the hearing on June 20th. So those are our next steps. Let's see, go ahead on slide. Any questions you might have? And also a quick shout out to Jeff Jones, who remains completely dedicated to transparency as we move through the Budget Development Process and making sure that our document is complete when we bring it to you in April. Thank you, Jeff.
Michelle, can you remind us, is the June 20th budget hearing, is that on our schedule or your special budget hearing?
No, no, it's part of a regular, it's part of the regular session. Yeah, yeah, it's under local budget law. It's called out as a specific hearing. And so we, I will call it.
One more quick question for me. I, I think that Margaret and Anthony may have raised this a few months ago and I just don't remember what the answer was. But I did have someone ask me recently, given that, a few months ago, the city of Hillsborough decided to go to a two-year budget cycle and given that the funding that legislators finally, what are the reasons we don't run a two-year cycle?
I think there's just a lot of contingency that can happen, including when our, when our bargain agreements happen with our staff. Those tend to happen, well, we've had the last couple's agreements have been three-year periods, which don't align necessarily. So I think we continue just to operate off the most recent information we have. It makes our budget a little bit more exacting, I think. I'd be for a biennial budget because then we only have to do this every two years. But I think in order for us to truly give the same level of visibility into our processes and our appropriations and power monitoring things, I recommend continuing right now on an annual basis. I'd be interested in feedback.
I will say that Michelle is always looking out two years. I mean, it's, it's part of the planning process.
But it's just the city, that's why you were asking.
Sure. So we are, we are giving visibility in the second year of biennium. We should not have do this.
Yeah, and there can be economic impacts that are happening when we've had the state in the past. They, oh, you're not gonna get a level of appropriation. You know, we have to make those mid-biennial adjustments. They just happen to happen, you know, more quickly. So. Same for us.
So the the twenty fifth was the budget message and uh sort of set things up for the hearing.
Yeah.
We won't have the allocation by the twenty fifth, right?
We typically don't during the long session. We typically don't. We pick we pick a number and we set our appropriations on that number that number, and then we have a contingency plan, which, you know, operationally, that's what we, you know, go to when it is set for sure.
Yeah, make our best guess as to what we think they're going to find us at.
Yeah.
Just want to make it clear that that when we're doing this, we don't have the actual numbers.
What we do, excuse me, we we have, we plan in various levels, yeah, and then we plug and play it on.
And forecasts have not been great. We've generally been able to manage staffing changes through. When when's the last time we had a breakdown? It's been a minute, right?
It's been a while. We we hired more and so many people.
Huh?
It's been a while. It's been a while, though. I mean, we can usually handle it all through the tree.
Yeah, it feels like that we know we're so made of hopefully that we're still in that situation here. Okay, uh, the only other wet blanket we can allow, make sure we're aware of, is between April twenty fifth and June twentieth on our calendar slide, there will be elections, so this board can talk about what we want to do on April twenty fifth. But this board will not be the board that sits June twentieth, sorry.
Well, there's.
The terms will go to.
I'll still be.
No, I mean, everybody, it doesn't turn over until July.
Okay, but yeah.
Officially.
Sure, yeah.
Mark White's kidding.
No, do not like him. Oh, my God.
If you guys have any additional questions, you're welcome to reach out to me directly, and then I'll bring back more information next month.
We appreciate that, Michelle. It's going to be tough to pick out what's more, actually, until the governor.
Sweet. There's a district nearby that has had some obligatory families and, right? You you and your whole staff, uh, even if it's tough times and you have to figure out my hard decisions, you don't have to surprise yourself. I very much appreciate all you. Something coming around.
Calendars.
Oh.
Calendars?
I need a couple of calendars discussion.
Well, I I thought it would be nice to see things side by side. So first of all, I do have the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. First of all, pretty neat, you can see the name. Um, I wanted to um just briefly go over this and spend most of our time on the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, because we'll be talking about this in the regular session. But essentially, for the twenty-three, twenty-four, we have a post-flavor day start. We have our family connections on Fridays at the first, the first day uh for our first or sixth, seventh and ninth on September seventh, and then our kindergarten break day and tenth and twelfth on September eighth. We have had a long discussion in working with Audrey and her team for O S P. We have determined that we would make September twenty-fifth a PK twelve staff development day, just because there is a need for that. And so that is something that we put into the calendar while also being able to keep our division twenty-two constructional minutes. And so everything looks pretty much the similar and would be kind of what I call a mirror of what we have this year for twenty-two, twenty-three. And the last day would be Thursday, um, June thirteenth for students and Friday, June fourteenth for staff. Um, and so those are kind of the key points that I wanted to point out. Audrey, did you want to add anything about the staff development day?
Um, no, it um other than just as we continue and perceive that to still continue to maybe be a a little bit of an issue going into next year, this does allow us a day to um do some P D with our folks. Um, it doesn't have an impact on our system.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to turn us to, I know, if if we're talking about twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, which seems so far away, but you had a request to see a calendar potentially or be practical by closing those. And so I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Um, this this cal- these calendars will align to our neighboring districts along with the Northwest Regional E S D. Uh, we've just did our H R Washington County meetings. There have been conversation about where we hold our winter break, where Beadurtons hold the other winter break, because they support the local um districts. And so they're trying to balance that piece. And we've aligned things and help support um the support efforts that the Northwest Regional does, and that effort of work to support our schools.
Comment, are you talking about the twenty-four, twenty-five or the twenty-five, twenty-six?
I'm talking about the twenty-four, twenty-five and the twenty-five, twenty-six together. So if you want to put those kind of side by side, yeah, I'm just saying that there's a request kind of regardless, you know, can we look at having a consistent winter break, kind of mirrors.
And this year, sorry, go back. This year, Beadurton is starting before us, before Labor Day, right?
Yeah, and their winter break comes later.
Different?
Yeah, their winter break is later in the year. And so they will be going all the way through, I believe, the two, one, twenty-second.
Their last day.
Yeah, so they'll take winter break starting on the twenty-fifth, and then we'll go all the way through the fifth.
Have the whole week of New Year's.
Yeah, the whole week of New Year's.
Oh, wow.
So that's a difference that um we have in, you know.
So we have that difference for this year, starting earlier and different winter break.
Yeah, and what's the, I was like, what's the reason? So I'm gonna I'm gonna keep us, uh, I'm trying to hold time too, because I know we have other folks that are presenting. So I just want to make sure there'll be more conversations about calendar, I can guarantee that. So one of the things that um in looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six is as we end each of the quarters, you can kind of see um that they end at the end of the month versus the beginning of the month, which is what they do now. And then it allows for an early release. Um, if you look at the end of the year for each of the calendars, June fifth in twenty twenty-four is the last day for students and the sixth for staff. And then it's the um eighth and the ninth uh for twenty twenty-six. And one of the reasons in twenty twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six year, we have Veterans Day that falls on a Tuesday. So we had to create, we created in the working draft, the non-contract day on Monday, November tenth. Otherwise, it's come to school, have a holiday, come to school. It's just kind of clunky. We also thought about potential staff development day, but then it's staff development holiday. So we uh made the determination that would be a non-contract day. So um there is what I call a little wiggle room and where we can move the con uh the connections day. See, you can see in twenty twenty-five, we moved it to Monday, August twenty-fifth, but it could be Friday or twenty-second, just to kind of um balance out the year. Um, I think, you know, the thing that I wanted to do is just to give in front of you what it might look like, so you can have a plan for the future. And what I'd like to do is come back next fall with both of these and maybe a little more solidified. And then we can then come in November, bring that for the first reading, and then adopt a two-year cycle come November or December twenty twenty-three.
And that puts us on the biennial schedule, correct?
Yeah, that puts us on a two-year cycle for a calendar adoption.
I bet we'll talk about it in between here a bit.
I I I'm sure you know. But I wanted to make sure I was doing my homework and bringing that back to you. Um, I think there's, you know, there's room for some, if you have questions or if there's feedback that you have uh regarding that extra kind of processing, feel free to reach out. I'm happy to take, I'm taking notes as we're planning for for upcoming years.
This is a great job. I think we I think we were just curious to see what it would look like. This is, and we're not working on these today, so it's great to get a look at what it would be to sort of get an in alignment.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that I directed back to Patrick a question he had about the winter ninety-one days, what do those days mean? So if you look at the bottom left-hand side of each of the calendars, you can see like the in uh the twenty-four, twenty-five, this is six and ten. That means six student days, ten staff working days. And then what you do at the end of the year, you can see the total number of days, which is a hundred and seventy-three and a hundred and ninety-four. You want to make sure everything adds up. And then when he had a great question about like, how, what's the difference between non-contract days and holidays? And then our paid holidays are designated um in the contract and start with Labor Day and go through Memorial Day.
So when do we adopt officially twenty-three, twenty-four? Next time?
Yeah, it's the end of February. It'll be our first reading, the end of February.
Second February meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So so everybody, please take them home, look at them, the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six versions. Those are our drafts. So what it would look like if we start before Labor Day and align our winter break? Somebody have any pressing questions? We've talked about twenty-three, twenty-four quite a bit. Anybody have any pressing questions on the upcoming year? Do we feel like we're ready to approve it?
Thank you, Todd. There's a lot of point five. Happy home. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fun, skin.
My next presentation, we have Jackson.
We do, we have a party.
Yeah, this is exciting.
Nice one. Yay.
I just want to take us off.
I'll take us off. I get so excited about registered youth apprenticeship that I'm going to try to keep quiet tonight. And so we brought a party. We have Brooke Novak, Melissa Pendergrass, Claudia Rizzo-Mendoza, and you've been due to talk to you about youth apprenticeship. Team, the slides are being driven through this area right here, so you're doing really well over there. And Brooke's going to set the stage about how this is part of our career and college pathways work, and then you'll get more and more detail, uh, including student perspective tonight. So thank you all for being here.
Great. If you could just. Trusty, great job involving me. So a little bit of our introduction, we will each introduce ourselves as we go through our respective slides. And we're going into why youth apprenticeship and why Hillsborough School District for the first of its kind in some years of registered youth apprenticeship update and then looking ahead. So let's start with our theory of action and career college pathways in Hillsborough School District. Career college readiness is not unique to us, our neighboring districts, or nationally. But what is unique is our theory of action. And so over the last nine years, um, creating reliable pathways that are relevant and the rate that we have grown our pathways is unique. And then also our responsive support systems that we put in place, not only in the classroom, but also for our students in our community, meeting, career days, internships, and now apprenticeship. So with those two components, that is what stands out in Hillsborough. That's the exemplars that we bring forth, not only in our community, but at the state and national level. And that is what's going to be covered tonight by Melissa, talking a little bit about the great relevancy of our program, and Claudia then highlighting the apprenticeship work that is currently happening and what's to come.
Good evening, Melissa, and I'm the coordinator for career and college pathways. Um, wanted to just kind of set the stage for how we build to youth apprenticeship. And when we talk about career and college pathways, I feel like that's probably a term that everyone's really familiar with now and in relation to H S D. But how that looks for our students is through a category of six different opportunities um in different industry sectors for students to choose a course um sequence that they can move through as high school students um to a capstone project their senior year. So students have um different opportunities in different sectors. So when we talk about creating pathways for students that are clear and viable, we know a big component of that for us is ensuring that those pathways and those options are relevant to the students and what they are interested in. So when we build out programs and look for how we're expanding what those offerings are, and then move into the next um phase in existing programs, we're looking specifically at what is relevant for our students in our local community and industry. Um, the youth apprenticeship program tonight that we'll talk about is tied into our industrial engineering system, C L A, that's on the far right. And then within that, the manufacturing cluster. The um industrial engineering systems, C L A, covers a lot of different clusters, but looking at manufacturing um specifically is really important for us, because that is a key um industry sector for the city of Hillsborough, specifically. One in four jobs in um Hillsborough are in the manufacturing sector. And eighty-eight percent of those jobs are in high tech or what we often call advanced manufacturing. Uh, forty-three percent overall of Oregon's um high manufacturing, advanced manufacturing jobs are located in Hillsborough um specifically. Uh, another piece when we're talking about um our industrial engineering systems pathways is that those are mostly all tied to C T programs of study that are recognized by the state. We offer over sixty-five C C Ps as a whole, but then thirty-eight of those and two more on the way um are C T programs of study. The key piece for that in connection tonight is that C T programs of study are recognized by the state in a few different ways. And one of those is if it provides relevant and sustained interaction with industry partners through things like work-based learning with internships and youth apprenticeship programs. Advanced manufacturing, the growth trend is not um anything that's new for us, because H S D has been um at the table with our local advanced manufacturing partners for um about five years now, when we're ruthless forums to bring all of our key partners um and stakeholders together to talk about how we can ensure that we are responding to this like dramatic growth um in that industry locally here in Hillsborough. So partnering with that group from the beginning gave us um a early foot in the door to find who are those employers that want to partner with us, like Intel and Gyra Semiconductor, Toto Ports, to really figure out how to break down the walls of how to get students into those spaces um early on, so that it's benefiting them, because they have students that are graduating aware of what the opportunities are for them um and excited about their companies. And then also, we know that it's like there's not a layer of mystery for our students. They're connected to those um businesses and in the in the building early on, um knowing what what they're going to be signing up for early.
Yeah, Claudine? Good evening, everyone. Claudia Rizzo-Mendoza, I'm the project manager for youth apprenticeship. Um, and it's my pleasure to be here to share with you all a little bit more about what youth apprenticeship is. And so before we kind of dive into the details, um, I did want to provide kind of a definition for a youth apprenticeship program. So it's a structured employment opportunity that includes both the educational piece and then the training components that lead to a high-skilled worker um adaptable to the work environment of the companies that they're working for. Next slide. So there's four basic key components for any apprenticeship program, whether it's an adult program or a youth program. We start by building strong relationships, and Melissa did a great job at uh outlining um our partnership with the Hillsborough Advanced Manufacturing Workforce, um, U P R in Hillsborough. Um, and so through this avenue, we're able to really partner with industry partners in the community to provide those opportunities for our students. So having a really strong foundation in terms of those relationships is kind of the first um step in developing a program like an apprenticeship. Um, there's obvious and clear definition and alignment in terms of what the students are learning in the classroom to what the workforce needs are. And so through the process of developing a program, we came together as a committee with the industry partners and our educators and really looked at the curriculum in the classroom versus what are the skills that are needed um in order to fulfill the occupations in the companies, and therefore created this clear alignment for the program. We're designing quality programs that are aimed to be sustainable and replicable um across the state of Oregon. And so currently, this program is the only youth program um currently running in Oregon. Not only that, but it's the only program that is specific to manufacturing in our occupation, certified manufacturing technician. And so we've done a lot of groundwork in identifying an apprenticeable occupation and really defining what that means through this workforce collaboration. And ultimately, I think the cornerstone of all of the work that we're doing is really promoting student success and creating those opportunities for our high school students regardless of whatever pathway that they decide to pursue after high school. Next slide. So the occupation that is currently registered with the state of Oregon in the youth apprenticeship program is that of certified manufacturing technician. And so we came to this occupation by serving the companies that we have at the table supporting this initiative and really identifying what their needs were um in terms of skilled workers. And so through that, we've identified the occupation and then really outlined what the skills and the competencies uh would be for this occupation, and therefore decided to move forward with the registration piece. So a youth apprenticeship program can have multiple occupations, kind of depending on those workforce needs. And so I'll touch upon that a little bit in terms of data collection and how we determine uh what those occupations are. Next slide. So there's there's a ton, a lot of benefits uh for an apprenticeship program. And so I've I've identified some here, which are really to provide hand-on uh career training for students. We have an opportunity for students to access high-quality education by participating in our uh career and technical education programs at the school. Um, they have access to a career and are really able to see and experience what it's like to work in a. They have access to a career and are really able to see and experience what it's like to work in a manufacturing facility, which was maybe unknown in terms of like the age limitations where there's this idea that, you know, anyone under the age of eighteen couldn't step foot in a manufacturing facility. So we're breaking down those barriers and preconceived notions that these are, you know, barriers that we have to overcome and doing so in a successful way. At the end of the apprenticeship program, the student will walk away with the nationally recognized credential in the occupation that we've registered. And so they can take this credential and seek a job opportunity anywhere in the United States for the particular occupation. But not only that, they walk away with the experience of working two years in a manufacturing facility and really developing those employability skills that we hope to be able to support our students with. There's also a wage component to the apprenticeship, so this is a paid opportunity. The apprentices are hired through the company as an employee and kind of we follow their progression in terms of the skills that they're learning. And there's a, there's a survey that we set out for our industry partners to determine what the wages are comparable to their regular employees in their facilities. I think similar to the benefits of a program for students are the benefits for our employers and our community and workforce. So our employers are really able to, you know, take advantage of the skills and the talents that we have in the community and further develop those students in specific skills within their company. They obviously support increased loyalty within the employees and really provide training solutions and address the needs for new employees as there's an influx of retiring employees in their facilities. And so they gain experienced employees that they can either hire on at the end of the apprenticeship program, if that's the choice of the student, or really rely on them for working over the summer as they're participating in secondary education and then coming back to, to Hillsborough to spend the summer and have a full-time job. There's also funding opportunities that are tied to apprenticeship and specifically youth apprenticeship that I'll touch upon in a second here. Next slide. So there's obvious differences in an adult apprenticeship versus youth. The main component that is different is the age. Our youth program has the same program standards in a similar format to an adult program. The requirements to participate in our program is that a student has to be in good standing, on track for graduation. We work with the students to create an individualized work schedule that works for them to maintain a full-time school schedule and then provide them with work experience credit so that they can go to the apprenticeship site and work a couple of hours in the afternoons or in the morning, depending on what their schedule looks like. And then there's a strong collaboration that I want to highlight in terms of a youth program and what makes our program kind of different and stand out. So we have, we as a district serve as the intermediary between the companies and WOLI and our students and families' community. And so typically, this is not how an apprenticeship program is set up. But this allows us to really be able to provide the supports necessary for our students such as provide transportation, work with the counselors on kind of the scheduling pieces of the logistics, and then really communicating with our instructors on how the student is doing in their experience. So it's my pleasure. Next slide. It's my pleasure to introduce to you an apprentice from Toso Courts. I'll let him introduce himself and share a little bit about his experience.
All right. So my name's Yubin Du Chanda-Sika. And I'm there at Toso Courts where I get on-the-job training in the manufacturing field. And I guess I'll be talking with you guys about my experience with the program so far and what I think about it. So overall, I think that the program has been positive for me. May I pay for it? Yeah, but I'm also, I'm learning what it's like to be in a manufacturing environment. Before, I never thought that I would get in one probably eighteen or later. I really do think that this will help my future career. It definitely looks on my resume. And yeah, it's also nice to just learn how things work in a manufacturing environment. Yeah, it's also complimenting my classroom learning as well. The CTE class in our high school, it definitely teaches some fundamentals about the like working in a manufacturing environment. I don't read that word a lot. Yeah, it's also helping like better manage my time as well because if I'm not careful of how I manage my time, I could end up doing a bunch of homework over the weekend. But yeah, overall, I just think that the program's been a positive experience for me.
Thank you.
Yubin, could you talk for a second about like what you learned in Mr. Loun's class that applies to your job? Or what you do in the job to get your certification eventually as a technician?
So mostly like, just like the fundamentals of how the machines work. So like, just like learning how like it worked on a X, Y, Z system along with other things. It's teaching the fundamentals of how those machines work. Yeah.
What experience are you getting that's going to help you in your future careers? What are your future careers?
So I'm thinking that I want to be an engineer as my future career. And I'm going to tell someone from work, they said that the reason why they're working here now is because most engineers, when they come down, they say like, do it, have it done this way. But without having to be there, they, it just won't work. So like actually working in an area and like understanding how things work should help me be a better engineer.
May I ask what your parents think about you working and learning and doing both?
They cannot stop bragging about it. Well, neither can we.
How long have you been in the program?
It's been about four, five months roughly, like since September. Yeah.
Is that mean you're a junior?
Yeah, I'm a junior. Yeah.
What, what advice or words of wisdom would you give other students that maybe were thinking about it?
Do it. It's worth it. Yeah.
I think this is the reason we're all so proud of the program too, right? And I think to touch upon a little bit in terms of the classroom alignment to what they're doing on the job, part of the, part of the youth apprenticeship program is to develop key standards. And so within those standards, there's alignment in the classroom with what they're learning on the job. So there's kind of an overlap of the expectations for them to learn in the classroom and then put it into practice kind of during their work experience hours. So there's clear definition there in terms of what they're expected to learn in terms of the skills, competencies, and then the learning objectives of the classroom. We've also been really fortunate to receive monetary contribution from Intel to support APR initiative with Weinstein's PR that allowed for a large media outreach and within our program. And so we've really had an opportunity to talk to leaders in the community about what this program means for the state of Oregon and for the community of Hillsborough. And so I think this is providing students with a good opportunity of opportunity to really reflect upon their learned experiences and how this can really support them in their future endeavors as well. So kind of tied to that, I think is also shifting our perspective a little bit to, shifting our perspective a little bit to a wider vision and lens in terms of the benefits of an apprenticeship program, not only locally but at a federal level. So there are certainly a lot of funding opportunities that have come to fruition to support programs like the youth apprenticeship. And so we have the CHIPS Act, we have Future Ready Oregon. That's supporting, providing another staff member to support with the expansion of our program. And so really just highlighting how many opportunities are available for us to continue to expand our programs is something that I'm super excited about. And so just having opportunities to host our leaders across the state into, you know, looking what this will look like in the future is, is great. Just earlier today, I had a conversation with Oregon WOLI, Bureau of Industries. And so they were really kindly asking like, what are the resources that you guys are putting together to support the program? And can we kind of work together to develop a lot of this content? And one of the key highlights behind that is that there is no other program like the one we have in Hillsborough. And so really taking opportunities to support other community partners, other school districts in pursuing these opportunities, I think is definitely key. So as we're looking ahead, we're looking to explore expansion opportunities with our other high schools. So particularly, we're looking at Lethal High School and their machine welding program and then Hillsborough High School with a bio-manufacturing program. And really looking at how their curriculum aligns to our current occupation to really expand recruitment opportunities for students across Hillsborough. Currently, the program that we currently have is from the Sentry Program of Industrial and Engineering Systems with Mr. Matt Loun. So we're hoping our next step is really to expand those recruitment opportunities. We're also looking to launch an additional occupation, which is that of certified maintenance technician. So in conversations with industry partners, this is something that would come up continuously in terms of their need for filling those vacancies for this occupation. And so looking to develop this, the second occupation under our current youth apprenticeship program is kind of second there on the list. And finally, we have building out a second joint apprenticeship training committee in a different sector. And so all of this work we're doing by considering the data, the growth in terms of opportunities in Hillsborough, the workforce needs that continue to exist in our community and really building upon those to create additional opportunities for our students. So very excited about all the things that are to come in terms of apprenticeship.
So first thing is, I'm actually really excited about the new opportunity for the incoming students, especially at my school. Because a lot of like the STEM-focused curriculum, it's nice and it's very challenging. But like experience is so important, especially when you do like engineering, the sciences. Even like music, you need experience to do that. So I am like so grateful that you guys are able to put this together and create an opportunity, like a paid opportunity. That's awesome. And this is fun. I'm really impressed.
So I wanted to thank the team here. As a junior in high school, I was in shoe design and enhancement, which means that I worked at the shoe sliding and chatted for it. So I totally understand this. I do want to say thank you to this team. If I didn't look back, you said nine years ago. Nine years now that this has really been in effect. And Travis and Brooke are two of the main innovators and visionaries on this work. Not two of the main, they are part of the two blogs that have got this running. And then just to see the team that's come along beside to make all of this happen is absolutely amazing. And I know that you regularly interact with higher end, with legislators, with tons of business partners, and you're literally changing the future for our students. So thank you. I appreciate it.
So I know we're the only one in the whole state. We're a lot, a lot of that.
Is that? Oh, we're all.
Definitely don't understand. A lot of that was working with the Bureau of Industry to get it passed. I convinced them that a seventeen-year-old is equally safe in a stadium as they are cleaning up shopping carts at Fred Warner. Maybe even more safe. So I also note that we're intentionally not being the black box. It's a secret. We're having a conversation. So you may or may not know. Are there any other districts on the cusp of starting a program?
We have received some inquiries from Placamas and surrounding districts, Beaverton, Walton, Tigard, that have reached out and have asked like, where'd you get started? How did you get started? What is the process to follow? So on our kind of to-do list is to develop kind of a handbook, workbook for other districts to follow. And that is kind of, we're in the first year of launching. So a lot of the compliance pieces, the requirements to maintain the program are still kind of in development with WOLI in terms of them also updating their documentation to reflect the options for registering youth. But I think once we kind of experience what year one would look like, it's really launching and being able to share this with other districts in the area, I think that's cool.
Yeah, I very much support that. Like I feel like you're in a rural county in Oregon. There's intersections with some agricultural companies in your.
Yes.
It's great. You guys have done an amazing job of being a partner to our business community and figuring out what they need. So I really hope it becomes a model.
Feedback from the company? Did you get feedback from the company yet on, on the apprenticeship? Oh, yes. Yeah, continuously. We meet with them regularly as a committee. And then also, we kind of ask them to come and speak to other industry partners that may have interest in hiring students. And they are great at providing their perspective because there's a lot that we know, right? In terms of the classroom learning, the district, and how that works and the supports we can provide. But I think from the industry partner perspective, there's a lot of things that they've done internally to support this program, including putting together branding policies that say, yes, we as a company support this program and these are the requirements that we, we are following in order for them to stay safe and be successful in their experience. So yes, we definitely are in constant communication with them.
I think that's the importance of Fabius' position that makes this work is she is that intermediary where they're sharing their feedback in real time or responding to it. And that we're showing up in spaces and places like the Hillsborough Advanced Manufacturing Industry Group every month. So not only are we sharing information about our school district on a monthly basis to a larger advanced manufacturing group, but we're also tending to the daily either questions or requests that are being made of this specific apprenticeship program. I saw Erica has a question.
I was just wondering about like in the summertime, is there an expansion of this?
Yes. Yeah. So a part of the, part of the program is it's set up as a competency base so that we aren't really tied to regulations in terms of hours. So there's kind of different options of setting up a program. What we ask for the students is that they commit for the school year with having the option to work full-time in the summer if that's something that they decide to do and are able to do kind of, you know, during breaks, holidays, non-school days. And so that kind of is a work that's done in collaboration with the company to ensure that they have a one-to-one mentor ratio for the student to be able to come and be there full-time. But yes, that is, that is an option.
To your program, I guess you're continuing, how is recruiting going for the next class of students?
That's in the works. I think the biggest barrier, I'll be completely honest, to the program and the way things are going now is really getting industry partner buy-in that have not really been a part of that process, of those conversations that we've been having for a couple of years now that are completely new to the idea of apprenticeship and youth apprenticeship and really communicating with them through conversations with industry partners to be able to get them to understand that, yes, you can have a sixteen-year-old in your manufacturing facility and that we have the support of WOLI and the documentation in place to provide you with those supports as well. So I think the more capacity that we're able to build in terms of industry partner employers, the more that we'll be able to recruit from, from our high schools.
There you go. Okay. I was just gonna say too, I think part of that is while we're navigating that, right? Like we're not letting, not letting that slow us down on our end in terms of setting up the other programs, the other CTE programs that are, will be positioned to take, to provide students when they're, when they're ready. And then the other thing too is through, I don't think you mentioned through the WOLI grant that we partnered with City and Central Doral on. That included a new hire that we just onboarded last week who's role to work with Claudia. It's around talent recruitment in our schools. And so as I'm gearing into the forecasting process with our high schools, that's someone that will be partnering with her to go to those programs and presenting classes to make sure that students kind of really understand what the structure is of the opportunity so that we are ready and can.
so that we are ready and can onboard with companies as they as they come on to us.
Well, I just want to share with you that this fall, yeah, last fall, Oregon School Board Association meeting in Portland. And I had the pleasure of being in a session, mentioned that I was in Hillsborough. And everybody went, whoa, how do you guys do that? Oh, my gosh, you guys do this career technical. And I mean, like, everybody was talking about it. I felt bad for the poor presenter because nobody wanted to do what they wanted to say. They wanted to talk about how we do it. And and so I'm just telling you, words out, everybody knows what you're doing. It is phenial and other school boards, they feel it because they're trying to figure out how to duplicate that. So don't give away all of the. Just, you know, keep it to ourselves. But it's just know that everybody knows it's working. It's phenomenal. People want to duplicate it and we got to get major accolades in the community, especially among school boards. We are doing this right.
I think it's important for us to also mirror the appreciation as it is School Board Appreciation Month to say that we wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing unless school boards of past and present of Hillsborough was supporting and championing, as so many of you have celebrated just tonight in your comments and questions. So that is also, I think, in the secret sauce is that Hillsborough and the community and and who you represent and the voices and support that you bring to this work is why we are where we are now. So thank you for that, especially this month in celebration of all the work that you do and you continue to do. We are fairly grateful for that.
Thank you, thank you. We should validate more time for this. Thank you guys so much. Our next topic's also involved guests.
Oh, it's another party.
What do you have coming up too? Do you want to say? What would you guys would like to say?
I've got a, I've got a small spot here. Well, what an act to follow. That's not fair. It's not fair. It's not right. Our gift, actually, our gift to the school board and School Board Appreciation Month was to be extremely informative and very efficient.
Before you get started, let me just set the table a little bit. When we think about partners that help our district be successful, one of those partners is the Northwest Regional ESD. And we do have three guests here this evening. Dan Bowman, who has been Superintendent in the K-12 district and now is Superintendent ESD. David Walker's been a longtime lobbyist and he looks out for us a lot in the region. And then Yadira, of course, our favorite board member, is here to share our message as well. One of the things that I've appreciated about the ESD as we have deepened our partnership is the fact that they're always on the lookout for barriers and potential hurdles that are going to be in the way for the districts in the region. Huge leaders during the pandemic years. And clearly, as we look at legislation that's coming down the path potentially for impacts on the K-12 budget at the state level, they are all over that and are always leaders in making sure that we're prepared for that. And I would say that's all in addition to the various services that they provide our district, which you're going to hear about this evening. But really appreciate all of their work and the leadership that Jase and Wes have. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Very appreciated. And I mean, honestly, just being in that corner here and listening to your work on CTE and pathways and student connections and workforce. It's, and you're right, it is a model program in the state. It's, and I'm just looking at, looking at the presenters. And of course, you know, we have Yadira now, which is fantastic. But you and Melissa Penegras, who is with us. I don't know. I don't know. But we're, it's a fantastic crew back there doing great work. And so, yes, we're going to talk to you tonight about the local service plan, which is one slice of our total operation at the ESD. Before I jump into kind of particulars, I'm going to turn it over to Yadira. She's going to kind of talk a little bit about, you know, the overarching piece of the ESD and then pass it over to David and back over.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you guys. It's been a while. So most of you know me already. My name is Yadira Martinez. For those that don't, and I am one of the nine members of the Northwest Regional ESD. And I represent, it's District Three. Yep, so Zone Three. And I'm going to just share a little bit about the local service plan that we've been talking about. So I've been on this board for about less than a year, almost in April of the year, and then four years on the Hillborough Board before that. So, so is there a slide like showing the twenty districts?
It's magical.
No, okay. So we serve twenty school districts across Tillamook, Platteville, Columbia, and Washington Counties, representing over a hundred thousand students. So our size and diversity affords districts a larger economy of scale of services than any other in Oregon, as seen in the breadth and diversity of programs that our district participates in. And so as you already know, by statute, each year, all Oregon ESDs must develop a local service plan that must be approved by the ESD Board. And then it must be approved on or before March first by two-thirds of the component school districts. So that is the ask today. The way that this local service plan comes together is pretty amazing. Twenty of the component school district superintendents and their leadership come together. They research, they discuss, and they develop the programs and staff development that is needed within each district. And that is like a really collaborative effort because it's everyone working together. So the district's superintendents have developed and unanimously, I can't say that word, unanimously approve the plan that is before you today.
Excellent.
So in your materials, here's a comprehensive local service plan document with quite a lot of information and that we've spoken about generally tonight. I want to point your attention to page twenty-eight, which includes the board resolution we are asking you to approve this. And with that, David's gonna give you more of the details.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yep, David Williams, choose staff for the ESD. I actually have only worked for the ESD since July one. I used to work for a school district just to the east of here. And, you know, it's actually puts me in a really unique position, not the district I work for. But coming new to the ESD really gives me an understanding of what these are. And probably not everyone in this room understands what they are and knows that like, ESD, what the heck is this thing? And Dan, maybe gets a little tired of me saying this, think of it, we're sort of like the education co-op, right? We're the purchasing co-op for all the districts in the region. And we have a really interesting region, as Yadira said, a hundred thousand students spread across twenty school districts in the whole county area. Off from that that not named district to the east of here with thirty thousand students, your district here with twenty-five-ish thousand students, on down to Jewels, the district with less than three hundred students. So finding services and delivering services across the region is is a really unique challenge and opportunity for us. And and that's really, that's what's really special. Now, we do have a special relationship, a unique relationship with Hillsborough and that other school district. And Superintendent Goldman's going to talk about that a little bit. Because of your size, you you don't always benefit from our economy of scale because you have your own economy of scale, right? So next slide. But Hillsborough does purchase in a number of ways and participate in a number of ways. I want to call attention to a couple of things. Really, the ESD, one of the big things we do recently is professional learning networks. So this is delivering professional development services to staff around the region. And Hillsborough School District does participate in a number of those networks. Another key thing that we do at the ESD is special education services, particularly high skilled, high need special services. So speech, language, pathology, OTPT, blind and visually impaired services. And I would draw it on the slide here. We have thirty-two staff that are employed by the ESD but are working in the Hillsborough School District, serving kids. We also have fifty-nine Hillsborough students that are placed in our social emotional learning schools and the blind and visually impaired program at Warner Elementary. The social emotional learning schools are located in Beaverton. So really, this this patchwork of services that we provide and then a huge backbone of support in in technology services as well. So it really is a broad range of services uniquely delivered to meet the needs of those more school district, but districts across the region as well. And that that's really a special relationship that we have. That's sort of the look back. But really what we're here today is to talk about that local service plan, which is looking prospectively at the next school year. And Superintendent Goldman is going to walk through that.
Okay, well, thanks. And the the programs that you're participating in as a district right now are represented, and David just walked through, are represented on page thirty-seven in your packet. And they're really glossing in, I think you do a good job of defining the the services that we that we participate together in. So, yeah, so as David said, by the way, Beaverton's not a bad word.
I said it once. I said it once.
No, no, no. They shall not be made.
All right. Well, this is my fourth year at ESD, fourth time in front of, with the board. And in this session format, it's good to be back in person with you. It has been a lot of Hollywood squares the last couple of years. And we, we're very thankful for the partnership. So I want to talk a little bit about the, how the money works so that the board really understands it, community understands the financial relationship here with all the programming that we that we do with you. And so the local service plan is really made up of, there's two main buckets of funding and they're not all comprehensive, everything that the ESD does. So apart from this plan, we bring in about seventy-one million dollars in grant programs to the region. And that is a substantial part of our budget. It's actually the most substantial part of our operational budget, like our staff. But when we have these other two buckets that make up the plan that we're going to ask you to to approve later tonight. One is the state school fund and the general fund. And then the other is the Student Success Act. So I want to talk through how that works. So this is a graphic that describes kind of how the state school fund resources come from the ESD and then go out to school districts. So ESDs make up four and a half percent of the state school fund in Oregon. And we're about seventeen percent of enrollment in terms of ESD enrollment blocks. And so that that money comes to us and ten percent stays at the ESD to keep our roots on our parking lots paid and all the things you would expect in an operations budget. And then typically, the way we work with eighteen out of our twenty districts, the twenty-five percent of the money stays at the ESD and we do this collective co-op thing of services that David was referencing. Because of Beaverton's size and Hillsborough's size, sorry, because of Hillsborough's size in the district, that shall not be made anymore tonight. Because of your size and your general economy of scale, we don't hold back that twenty-five percent any longer. And so Hillsborough and that other district get ninety percent, this whole blue and maroon picture here, comes completely to the district. And you'll see that in in your packet where there's, you know, the actual money and resources. So all that money comes back and then Hillsborough and Beaverton participate in what we call the core with our other eighteen districts in one specific area, and that's really around professional learning and what we call regional innovations, which is our grant writing services, a bunch of CTE dual credit work and other components. And I'll walk, I'll walk through those. But this, this actually seems to work because the money flows through and then you have full autonomy as a district to decide how your industry succeeds. Okay, excellent. So Yadira talked a little bit about how this plan is developed. So here's a graphic that kind of walks us through a year, you know, a year in the life of an LSP. In the fall, it's all about collaboration with our superintendents and then like our curriculum votes, meaning your curriculum votes and those from across the region, and determining what the services are that are really required and need to be in here. A lot of that work happens with our special education leadership. That's a faithful of what this, what the local service plan provides. And so by November, those conversations are wrapping up. And then our superintendents take this vote on our proposed plan. This was a unanimously approved plan. In December, our board adopts it and then we send it out to all the twenty school boards in the region. And then January, February is that process for school boards. And then we post our services then, and then it's about program selection. And then we get in like a lot of conversations with Michelle and her staff about, you know, what we can afford, what the pricing of services are going to be for the next year as we set, set our budget for the following year. Next slide, please. So again, there's kind of three parts to this particular plan. There's core services, which we're really not going to talk about very much tonight because that's really for the other eighteen school districts. The menu services, which we'll talk about, and then of course, Student Success Act, our technical assistance plan. Ah, small, small print slide. There we go. So core services, what I really want to focus on here for you is where it says Beaverton. Sorry, Hillsborough, other districts, school districts, and how you participate in what we call core services. And so there's these two buckets, like I said, regional innovations, professional development. And just to give you a sense of the things that you're participating in and the bank for your buck on this side is you have, we have the ninth grade success network, which your high schools are highly involved in. We have an attendance collaborative, diverse educator pathways work to diversify our workforce, instructional coaching networks. So we have a big network across the region for instructional coaches that you have to help and support their work. We have a regional educator network, which is focused on, again, diversification of the workforce, equity-based initiatives, school safety, the prevention systems, a social and emotional mental health network that you're, a lot of your staff are participating in. And then we'll land a promise. This used to be the Northwest Promise, but we teamed up with, actually, Melissa was a big part of this work. We teamed up with Willand and ESD and combined our services to get more scale and more bankier buck on dual credit services. So that's just a slice of what you, what you're receiving. And then really, the the amount that Hillsborough's putting into this particular bucket is around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this plan. So that's the one way that you participate in what we call core. And I think there's beyond just the, the what you get for that money. This is the way that Hillsborough and other districts actually provide regional benefit and are a partner to other school districts. Because one of the pieces of the secret sauce, right, for instance, on your, on your, on your pathways program is that you have economy scale here in Hillsborough. And if you just go out to Gaston, they're not pulling that thing together, right? Like they're not going to have that program where you had it. And by Hillsborough and Beaverton participating in this co-op, as David said, of services, we can actually create those conditions as an agency for the Gastons, for the banks and the smaller school districts in our region. And that's a really important part of our relationship with Hillsborough. Service credits on the other side, you're going to see your district is not listed here because you you get the full ninety percent, it just goes into your district account. And then you guys purchase services or take it into your general fund. The other districts, you have to do a whole bunch of calculations of how we're going to put that money on. It's all on the ATM. Next slide. And you can skip this one too. So the next one, please. Thank you. So this is the service menu. These are the things that we're standing up and planning to stand up for next year with your approval. And these are the services that are basically for purchase. Hillsborough participates in quite, as David said, quite a lot of our special education programming. Our early learning partnership with you is strong. So we obviously have the special education funding side of that. That's one of those large grants that we pull in. But we are also in partnerships with you as you develop your district preschools. We're part of your partnership on making those things happen at a high level. Technology infrastructures, et cetera. And so these are all the services that you'd be able to purchase through through the ESD. And lastly, happy to take any questions here. We have. There we go. And and then we have our Student Success Act Technical Assistance Plan. So ESDs are in the SSA as a technical assistance, in a technical assistance format. And so we basically have, we basically break up this body of work into two buckets. One we call getting and keeping the money. And the other is supporting your student. And the other is supporting your student investment account plan. So you, as a board, approve your student investment account, you're going to be integrated guidance planning right now, you'll come up with your your initiatives. And our job is to support you in any way we can around implementation. And then with the integrated guidance work that you're doing now to get a plan approved by the department, we're highly involved, the school districts, in supporting your work to make sure that those plans are approved, that you get your money and you keep your money. So we kind of have two bodies of support around that. So on the implementation side, here are the things that we stand up, we do this, we use these funds along with the core. You'll see a lot of redundancy here because we actually create funding to actually be able to lift up these services across the region. So you'll see the ninth grade success net network and things like that you're highly involved in, N T S S coaching, research and assessment and evaluation. So we have a data department that helps districts set growth targets, monitor enrollment, all kinds of things, and was actually quite involved in our pandemic response around what's going on with COVID and the spread. So that's all in the technical assistance program as well. So that is a lot of rattling off a bunch of programs. We would love to take questions from you or hear anything related to our to our plan.
As as I mentioned, yeah, so the reason we're chatting today is, so the first emotion on our agenda on site is approve this. So this is the time to ask questions, make sure you want to vote yes.
All joking aside, I do appreciate the fact that that getting information that you guys sent to us and this presentation helps us to understand how we interact and where we intersect with E S D. I can't speak for everybody on the board, but that is a difficult concept to navigate coming from a part of the country where there are no E S Ds. This is very interesting to me. So thank you for that. Just regard all of that jokes, we love everybody.
Yeah, it is an interesting, yes, these are interesting. You know, I'm a district guy my whole career, and Mike knows I tried to pick up the pieces of him and his work in Tiger Twalts, and I was there for a place of time with Sue. And was a district superintendent in the river. And yes, these are, they are a morphis in some ways. And one of the, one of the reasons is, is we try to be of value to the regional districts. And so our E S D looks a lot different than other E S Ds in the way that we interface with our districts is different because of the relationships that we have and what districts need to offer. So it is, it is like, it is different, especially across Oregon and across the country.
I also really appreciate the fact that we're able to have these partnerships and help smaller districts. I grew up in Astoria, still Astoria, still districted, so I know, or students perspective in that case, but just the difference has been making up size districts. And it's wonderful that we have the way to have the E S D.
I appreciate how you make your facility available for regional events like the one coming up soon. And hopefully we've all received an email about legislative summer where I'll get a chance to talk with school board members regionally and our local legislators from Washington County. And it'll be hosted at the E S D facility here in Hillsborough. So thank you for doing that. And we know our colleagues in Beaverton, thanks for collaborating with them all. Greg Martinez wants to thank you to continue serving the public. We appreciate your efforts so much and your time that you have with us. One of the deep dive core services was the Fox forecast line. Did we do that separately or we except, because I know we have access to the Fox forecast line on our own, right?
Directly.
Is there an action item night to approve this plan in general or is it our specific?
Our specific local service plan. Well, their local service plan, and then you know the districts who adopt it.
It's the general local service. Oh, yeah. It's not specific to Hillsborough. No, you're approving the holes. The state law requires the local service plan that drives our budget, not your participation in it. The local service plan to be adopted by two thirds, two thirds of the components of district, right? Your participation in it comes later in that conversation on what is and is not purchased.
We are, we we strive for unanimous because we've been on the road. We were in Astoria two weeks ago and Tillamook. And last week we were Sherwood, somewhere else. And 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 so far, so far it's been unanimous. And really, it's, it will only be that way because we do the work up on with superintendents. And it's kind of like we have a year long budget process for us and it really lands here, like this is kind of like our collaborative effort that gets us there.
Questions? Sorry, we'll be a little late getting to you. Appreciate you guys spending time with us. All right, final agenda item upstairs is very brief actually, so we'll drive it down pretty close on time. Just to summarize where we are, especially where we are with the superintendent search, the, if you look in your packet, it's page fifty of the packet, the calendar. So yesterday was the day the the listing went public. So that is out there. We don't have any representatives from consultant today because there's really not much that has been done since the last time we met with them and now, so.
Question, they asked us for kind of a day we wanted to include a question. I have like, we'll have those.
Is it too late to include the names of people that should be part of the thing, part of the?
I've been collecting them all the time, saying you have something to include. Well, there we go.
A couple of things that we talked about last time and that we've discovered since. We thought that Rose has been in communications consultant nearly every day most of the time today, O S B A, and had the insight to contact the agency that would investigate us if we got it wrong somehow. And turns out, there are some things that we thought we needed to pass, like what we talked about, like you need to pass this in order to talk about it. It turns out, all of the great work we've been doing in the previous board we've been doing all along has set us up, we've already done all those things. So we will not need to like approve the search criteria of like all these. There's a few things that we thought we had to specifically address. Turns out, the work we've already done makes it so that we've already addressed these things and Rose verified that the agency that would investigate us, we got it wrong. So what we'll be doing next is, I believe, yeah. Surveys, the, fill up the calendar, they'll be onsite, talking to the groups. And then the next time we join in will be at the twenty eight board meeting where we discuss the first cut of candidates. Does that make sense? We really have any thing we need to act on in the first board meeting, but we're here. So it basically, everything's on track, the position was listed, and now we wait to get applicants. And in the meantime, the consultants will be onsite. That that's where I'd ask board, you know, is it good for board members to attend these things? And of course, if you're board members, you can go wherever you want to go, district activities. But I think proximity bias makes you glance differently toward the road, so, you know. I probably will not attend any of these sessions myself. So they'll be conducting those sessions to get the community feedback, then they will be sharing that community feedback and using that community feedback to help haul the applications to figure out which first cut applicants are going to go forward. Makes sense? Everybody cool with where we are? Not a big update, but, you know, we'll stand top of this course. All right. We will move downstairs. Our meeting is in recess. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atfality Indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on, the Tuat Alton Kalapuya, the Kalamet, Clackamas, Tomwater, Malala, bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. In remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native First Peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over four hundred tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. Thank you, Mike, for providing that. Uh, all right, we have a few proclamations today. Oh, are you, you're first?
I think I'm up.
Wow.
The Hillsborough School District Board of Directors establishes establishes clear standards for student performance. The Hillsborough School District Board of Directors ensure that student assessments are tied to established standards. Hillsborough School District Board of Directors are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement. The Hillsborough School District Board of Directors align school district resources to ensure that students meet standards. The Hillsborough School District Board of Directors build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability. The Hillsborough School District Board of Directors are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. The Hillsborough School District does hereby declare its appreciation to the Board of Directors and proclaim the month of January two thousand twenty three to be school board recognition month. I urge all community members to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world. Thank you.
And thank you to all the schools who provided all of the stuff in front of our chairs today. The swag, there you go. And more often than not, when you see me walking around at Tuesday Market or Saturday Downtown Hillsborough, I won't be looking like this. It's in a flannel shirt and a school T shirt, so. All right, next up, Nancy.
Love the January of this year because we begin recognizing all of the people that are the fabric of this country, and I love it. So we are starting out, the Hillsborough School District honors and acknowledges the central role of Black Americans in U S history. The Hillsborough School District is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and rejects the long history of institutional racism towards Black Americans. The Hillsborough School District pledges to stand against bigotry, intolerance, and hate, and follow the lead set by generations of Black Americans who have courageously led us to the pursuit of equality. The Hillsborough School District has been enriched by the diversity of perspective and experience of our Black community members who have made valuable and long lasting contributions to our district. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of February twenty thousand twenty three to be Black History Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of Black Americans to the development of prosperity of our community. Hillsborough School District Board of Directors, thank you.
Thank you. Monique, I believe you have the next one.
And to the microphone, I love.
You're making me look bad, Monique. All district community. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica, I believe you're up next.
All right, so many people to celebrate this one. The Hillsborough School District appreciates that school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. The Hillsborough School District knows that school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. The Hillsborough School District values school counselors' work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. The Hillsborough School District applauds that council, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are an are an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby extend our gratitude to the counselors of the Hillsborough School District and proclaim the week of February sixth through the tenth, two thousand twenty three, as School Counselors Week. We urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of school counselors in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world.
Thank you. All right, would any of my colleagues like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection? Seeing none, the motion carries. Would any director like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Is it first? Did I skip audience time? Oh, yeah, before the consent agenda. All right, sorry.
We take it back.
We don't have it, yeah, I didn't think we did. All right, never mind, we don't have any. No, Sheen, could you go again, but not push the button?
Don't press, oh, oh, right, okay, got it. So I move that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Kim and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection? Seeing none, that motion carries. All right, reports and discussions, oh, more high school classes. Yes. Always one of the funnest parts of our year. Our first reporting discussion is regarding the approval of high school courses.
Thank you, Chair Watson. I just want to kick off tonight by thanking the teachers who are here tonight. This is a super busy time of year, yet our teachers are innovating and bringing forward new courses that would be available to our students in H S D. So thank you all for being here. I also want to recognize Principal Julie Casper, who came to support teachers from Century High School tonight. Thank you for being here. And tonight, we also have Shira Longstrand, who is the vice chair of the C C A C. So as Becky is the M C tonight, and we'll be running through the presentations with our teachers, Shira is here to represent the conversations that happened at the table at the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee level. So thank you for being here, Shira. With that, Becky Kingsmith, our director of secondary teaching and learning.
Good evening, everybody. If you can go to the next slide. I'm going to focus most of our time today on the presentations by our teachers and some of the discussions we had with the C C A C. So we have three courses that we'll be presenting this evening. First off is A P World History, and that's going to be presented by Makaiak Kaiser. This is out of Century High School. I V Psychology and I V Language Avenida. Those are both out of Hill High. And just to be noted that if the school board approves these courses, they can be offered at any of our district high schools. With that said, I V is offered only at Hill High. So the likelihood of that class being offered anywhere else would mean we have to expand I V somewhere else, which we are not currently have plans for. So so we're going to go ahead and get right into it. So I'm going to invite Makaiak to take us through A P World History.
Thank you. Advanced Placement World History, this is offered by the College Board and is a subject that looks at history of the world from around the year twelve hundred C E to the present time. So relatively brief period of time, right? This class used to be a class that Uh, this class used to be a class that would take on the entire expanse of humanity. And um, a few years back, they uh changed it to AP World History Modern. So it's um, I know that's a question sometimes people have if they've um taken AP World History in the past as a student themselves. You know, why has the timeframe shifted? That was a change that uh the College Board did uh about three, four years ago. So it's twelve hundred to the present. Uh, you can see there uh some other um goals and outcomes for the class. This is primarily uh a class that's offered or targeted towards uh tenth graders, but it can be taken by eleventh and twelfth graders as well. Uh, it complements the eleventh grade targeted uh A-PUSH course in the fact that the assessments uh are almost identical as far as what the students are asked to do as far as the writing um tasks, things like a document-based question, um essays, those kind of things. So it's a really good preparatory course in itself while being a course offered for college credit. It's also really good for students who are interested in continuing with the AP track uh in social science. It al- also, I mean, the the really big thing that, and the reason why I'm here standing in front of you is uh I really believe in this course and believe in its mission, which is to try and and get our students to look at history from a more global perspective. And so I just really want to drive that point home is that this is a really great course, I think, for all of our students um from various backgrounds, and it really, I think, embodies a lot of the goals that our district has talked about as far as getting different perspectives, um, you know, being talked about in in our classes, so. Are there any questions? Are we doing questions or no?
Hello, Shira Longstrand. Um. So CAC, CCAC, feedback and questions. Um, one of the things we were concerned about was um barriers to students. So we asked if the exam costs money, and we were told that um it does cost ninety-seven dollars. There is a fee reduction of twenty-five dollars, and there are scholarships, and there's a fee waiver for students who can't afford it. Um, also, the school is give, or the test is given during a school day um in the first two weeks of May. So they wouldn't have to find extra transportation to get there, which was another one of our concern. Um, we were also um interested in if the course was focused on a Eurocentric lens. And we are sure that one of the reasons for proposing this course was to provide a more global historical perspective as AP European history is already offered. And the scope of the sequence is set by the College Board, but um, which includes European exploration and colonialism, but also history and perspectives of Asia, Africa, and South America.
Sorry, we uh made an audible there. So I think we will do because of the um each course being unique in its nature. Um, we'll go ahead and have any questions or comments after each course that we present. So um, if there's any questions or comments that any board members have.
Anyone have questions?
Thank you. The two the questions I have were to the questions that you brought up there. So thank you very, very much.
So, is this one? So the um AP World History is going to be offered at Century, right? And other schools?
Uh, if it's approved by the board, then yes, it would start at Century um with our anticipated timeline of um being able to forecast for it for next year.
Okay, so one question I have is how much does the World History curriculum overlap with Human Geography?
That's a really good question. I do not know the exact answer to that um because I'm not well versed in the AP Human Geography.
Lucky for you, I was the original proposer of AP Human Geography in Hillsborough School District and taught the class for three years. Um, I have not ta- taught AP World History, but one of the benefits of um being in this role is I get to hear about every single course that gets proposed. And I would say the perspective that is taken is um very different. This is going to be more of um historical um looking at events, what happened during that time, who impacted um kind of that perspective. Whereas um Human Geography is really a class that's looking at uh the human impact on on land and on um the world around us and how those things have impacted things historically, but also present day. So um, I think it would be, this would be a really interesting class for students to take after they take AP Human Geography. I know that that is accessed a lot by ninth graders, so I think going into a class like this um would be fabulous because you'd be able to make a lot of those connections from things that you learned in AP Human Geography.
Um, I also would like to add, just as a little perspective, since I've taken World History, AP Human Geography, and all of the other AP History courses at my school, um, AP Human Geography kind of tackles a lot of in the U.S. from my personal experience when taking the curriculum and World History, I took that my freshman year. That's how it was like in my high school. Uh, but I think it does add a lot of perspective because even when taking AP US History, it is taught through a certain perspective. When, if you would teach AP World History, I think it would be taught through a different perspective that would add a lot um of benefit towards students. So in my personal opinion, I think this would be a a big impact for high school students.
More questions? APUSH is a ninth grade class? Junior year, okay. It's AP World Geography, that's a ninth grade class. Tenth grade.
And AP World History will be available to everyone.
But tenth grade on?
Something.
Correct, yeah. It's um, the College Board doesn't say it has to be
Sure.
one grade or the other.
That's just what you're suggesting and planning.
And looking around the nation, you know, I've done a lot of research, looking at other, you know, places that offer it, and it's primarily offered, you know, tenth graders are kind of where they target. Um, but you as eleventh and twelfth grade, you would be be open for them as well.
Thank you for putting this together. I I grew up in a small district without any AP or IB offerings, and so I'm always so happy that we have it here. And I think the most important thing to be successful is a engaged, committed educator. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you very much. I grew up in a similar situation, and I learn just as much as the kids when I go through and teach these courses. So it's personally, it's a lot of fun.
Thank you. Next up.
Okay, we are going to move on to our IB um courses. And um before we go into the specific course proposals, I've asked um Ashley Funnens, who is the IB Coordinator um at Hill High, to give a little bit of of an overview of um International Baccalaureate as a program um um kind of internationally, but then also what that means at Hillsborough High School. I think um it is unique in um what IB looks like versus AP. AP is more of an à la carte option, so students have a choice of choosing a class here, a class there. Maybe they take one AP classes, maybe they take five AP classes during their high school career versus um IB is much more about um kind of the suite of what it all looks like together. But I'll leave that to Ashley to explain.
You're doing well. Uh, good evening. As Becky started, and the difference, I think, primarily between the College Board's Advanced Placement and the IB model is that the International Baccalaureate courses are developed and moderated by an international group of educators and experts. They seek to be interdisciplinary in nature, so there's a lot of collaboration and crossover both between content and then also between skills that are taught. And the goal of the IB is that it's developing a learner as a compassionate, critical-thinking, engaged global citizen. So it's a, it's packaged and intended to be kind of a holistic approach to a student's education. And the IB runs a diploma program for eleventh and twelfth graders, a middle years program for eighth through tenth graders, and then a primary years program. And so we offer the um diploma program. So all the courses we'll talk about will be targeting eleventh and twelfth graders with some very nuanced exception. I think there's a second slide to this. Yes, thank you. Um, the two courses that we are looking at adding that we're proposing this evening are highlighted in yellow. Um, and this is kind of a picture of how they would fit with our current offerings in the program. There's a number of different ways that students can engage with the IB on our campus. And the two that students take advantage of the most are that they might do our honor CCP, which is any three of these courses, and one of the core critical thinking courses, Theory of Knowledge. And and that would gain them, you know, that recognition at graduation, meet their CCP requirement. And then we have about eighty percent of our eleventh and twelfth graders taking at least one IB course. Um, and then there's, of course, the diploma program, which a fewer number of students do, and that's a much more specific and rigorous pathway. Um, but you can kind of see where these courses would fit in. Um, the psychology course would fit into the package of social studies type courses. Um, and Abinatio would fit in with our language acquisition courses. And so I'll let um our experts talk more about each of those courses, but I'm happy to answer any program specific question.
Okay, so moving on to, I believe we have um, you can go ahead one more. Yes, IB Psychology. So presenting IB Psychology is uh James Meck, who is a social studies teacher at Hill High.
Hi, um, I'm James. She said that already. Um, we are looking to add IB Psychology uh to our courses at Hill High. It is the study of our brains, our interactions with the people around us, how we perceive those interactions within our brain, and uh how that helps us understand the world around us. So it goes through anatomy um and some scientific. Oh, sorry, I'll try to be louder. Thank you. Uh, it goes through anatomy, uh, some scientific method, um, and a lot of other kind of interesting perception, how we view the world around us, how we learn the things we learn, how we know what we need to know, how we remember, how we can remember things better, and um just better be a better person in the world. I think um the more important part for me about psychology is we've expanded at Hill High from a very small kind of one semester psychology class to four full classes where we teach psychology one and two. We have a ton of uh student engagement in this class. And um I, it's really exciting for me because definitely it's what my degree level is in, so I'm glad to see it grow. And I think this would just be another step in that direction. For the kids in our district, it allows us psychologies in the top three of um college choices for people who want degrees of psychology is in those top three. And um it allows for people to take that degree and go into a lot of different fields. It's very adaptable. They can go into psychology, they can go into the medical field, they can go into uh crime, work in the FBI. There's so many different fields that psychology helps in the world around us. But it also helps our youngsters understand how we interact with the world, how they can better interact with the world, how and why they feel and think some of the things they do, and how that allows them to interact in a safe way in the world around us. Any questions? Oh, yes.
Um, I totally forgot to say how we voted on the last one. Do we save that for the end or? Oh, okay. Well, I guess just like a quick um recap for the AP World History. Um, we were in favor, thirteen eyes, one abstain. So now moving back to where we were, um, with AP Psychology. So CCAC, um, one of the questions we asked was if there was a cultural lens within the course or curriculum of, for example, epigenetics and multigenerational impact of the experience of racism. And IB is internationally vetted, vetted, and a global network of teachers collaborating to create the course guidelines. IB isn't perspective of content, provides pedagogical and thematic structures for each course. We can tailor it to meet the standards of our students, who has served and who has not served in the field of psychology, who is present in the data set, data set, and who is absent as well as ethics. The other concern we had, um, because we were talking, or uh Mr. Meck was so excited, and he was telling us about um the experiments that could happen and um just like how the kids could learn and apply the material. And one of the things that did come up was math, and so we just wanted to make sure that if there was a math requirement to the class, since there was a, you know, a focus on statistics and data. And so there is no math prerequisite, um, but the way that you saw how IB like is a full like circle, um, the math IB teachers could um implement supports so that the kids have um wraparound support from other courses as well. And um CACC voted in favor as well, and I believe it was thirteen, I'm sorry, let me. Yeah, it was thirteen um eyes, no nays, and one abstain.
Ready for questions?
So, so as a student right now taking um AP Psychology at my high school, um, we are given two options, and the option is to either take the AP exam or get dual credit through a new program that we've installed. Um, I was wondering, because I do remember that some of my friends who are in IB um courses also may have an opportunity to either take the AP exam or just continue with the IB um course. But I'm not too familiar with IB, but I will ask, do um, does IB also allow students to take AP um exams so they can get um college credit?
Ooh, that's a good question for.
My understanding is that any student who wants to pay to take the AP exam can do so. And so if there's enough content overlap, I think I don't see any reason why that couldn't happen. Um, students also have the same opportunity for college credit or similar, similar opportunity for college credit through the IB, so. Short answer, yes.
I hope you're enjoying your your course.
I am. I love my teacher. He's awesome.
See, all psychology teachers are great. I mean, not included, just in general.
Now, I, it's interesting, um, the the AP Psychology course that my son is taking, he didn't quite understand the test part of it.
Right.
So when it briefly came up in conversation, went over it, said, nobody, you know, everybody's like blah, 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 doing their thing. And so he didn't know. And so when we explained to him later on, he said, I had no idea. I would have just asked you blah, 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 and I'm just wondering, maybe we could have a real conversation with the parents. So when they do that, so that we know that it's coming in, hey, no problem. If you want to take the class, let us know. We write a check, we do that.
I, but. I think, I think, um, actually, I feel, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
I feel like um our IB program does a great job of of community outreach. We have, has its own website, it has a connection to it. They're constantly reaching out to parents. I think they post the test dates and the test times and how to apply months ahead of times. And Ashley does a great job of coordinating that and making sure that we are reaching out to the people we are reaching out to. I think too, in the, in, in our IB classes, there is a function where we say, hey, we're going to test, what does that test look like? And we go through practice sessions of that. So there's, it's never a surprise, at least in the IB courses that I've been a part of or that I've seen. So I think, I think that's a good focus and important, but I think that's a strength of our program in particular.
Haley, have you got something?
Just a, are you guys voting on this?
Not today. This is the first reading. We'll probably vote on it next month.
Well, I just wanted to add it because I also took this class. Um.
Wait, you took the IB one?
No, I took the AP course at my class, the one your son's taking. I love Miss Awabde, by the way. She's amazing. Um, but I think that, just like emphasize, I'm not sure if the curriculum would, I'm sure there's a lot of overlap, it might not be identical. But I think not only does this uh course like teach about, know what you would imagine of psychology, but it also teaches teaches you just about like how to interact with humans. It also has a really heavy like um anatomy course, which taught a lot of people a lot because you don't have to take those in high school. So I learned a lot that I was, I'm not anticipating learning. Um, but I think that I'm happy this course is expanding because I think it taught everyone who I knew a lot more and a lot about just like human dynamic and everything um that is not taught in required courses, so.
The anatomy portion is great, and it has a huge scientific component, which I think is fun. But it, it's not like science, like you go in the lab and everybody, it, it's not like biology. It, it's a different kind of science, it's more social, so I feel like it's more accessible for students and some connect with that better. Um, also, you bring up a good point as you both talk about AP. We offer AP Psychology at all the other high schools. Um, also, you bring up a good point, as you both talk about AP, we offer AP psychology at all the other high schools. And Hillsborough High School is the only one that doesn't have um, a higher level psychology course. So really, this is just trying to get us on that same level.
You have something, Patrick, say, pull the mic.
I was curious, and I thought probably it's been a question better directed back to you, Travis, but um, so I'm curious, since we're looking at proving new IB and AP courses, do you have any sense for uh, how many uh, different courses are currently approved in the district and how many are actively taught?
Well, I'm right in the middle of the course catalog process right now for our high schools. Where we um, list all of the um, classes that we currently um, plan to offer, or at least put on our forecasting sheets for next year. Um, and so there is, I would say ninety-five percent of those classes carry over from one year to the next, to the next, right? Um, there are some classes that um, we pause maybe for different reasons. Um, sometimes it's because of student interest, sometimes it's because it's being um, potentially replaced with something slightly different. Um, but all, like I mentioned, kind of at the beginning of this presentation, once a course is approved in Hillsborough School District, it's approved kind of forever, right? And so um, it's like whenever anybody asks me, um, do we have fill in the blank course on the books, right? That's then my job to look back and be like, yes, we taught it in twenty eighteen. Is this something that you're interested in bringing back? Um, sometimes that also has to do connections with some of our staffing, right? So when uh, when we might hire a new teacher to our district, that comes with a certain area of expertise. Um, that maybe they've taught, of course, in a previous district, then that allows us to um, look at uh, potentially bringing a course back that we had to put on pause for other reasons. Um, I think a really good example of that is um, we are going to offer Mandarin, um, the first level of Mandarin at Century High School next year. Um, which we have approved kind of first level of world languages in our district. So we didn't have to go through the full approval process. But that's a really good example of, we happen to have hired a math teacher at Century who had this expertise that she brought with her from um, from her own studies and taught a Mandarin class at um, a previous district. So we are going to capitalize on that by being able to expand our world language offerings at Century next year. But if I, you had, I could do the research of knowing how many courses we have approved total and how many we currently offer. I do not know that currently off the top of my head, though.
No worries, I know, most of my colleagues are very good about sending all their questions in advance. And I do a lot of those, but as soon as I think of questions, as we're discussing as well, so I didn't mean to catch you out, but uh, you know, curious to know for the future.
Those are the best questions, by the way.
To Kaylee's point, I could still benefit from instruction on how to interact with humans, be very useful.
Uh, I think we all could.
Uh, as you mentioned earlier, the IB program is a little more structured, a little less uh, à la carte, like um, the AP programs. So do we have students uh, requesting a higher level of psychology? Or do we have um, programs, uh, you know, college programs saying you should really be offering this? What, what's sort of the core motivation to try to create this new class?
Well, we, we extended, when, when I first came to Hill High, we had one course that was a half a year class. That was just kind of like an introduction to psychology. And since then, we had so many requests for it. We expand, expanded from the half a year psychology class, and we made a psychology two, where we expanded in so we could get all the content and kind of get into some deeper thought in some of the more rigorous parts of psychology. So it just seems kind of like a natural progression as we've seen it grow uh, over the past couple of years.
With the program being more structured, do we know where we might see fewer in students enrolled? Like what kind of classes this may?
Well, we have.
From in their structured days, probably a question for.
Yeah, I think honestly, well, I teach uh, HOA or History of the Americas also, and it's in that same department. So maybe we might have some overlap in our social studies department, but that course is, is full and is running really well. So we, I don't, I wouldn't anticipate that it would harm that course that's already running.
Thanks.
Recognizing that at some point, well, I'm a parent, so I'm gonna get that, but Patrick isn't a parent yet. And so it makes me want to ask Travis, would it be inappropriate or a burden for us to get a copy of the curriculum catalog that goes to the students?
Well, Becky was talking, I thought about, we could send a link um, to the board of the course catalog, which is on our website. And it's one of the best things we have going in terms of removing barriers for students. We're transparent about everything that's offered at every high school. So as a parent, you can read that and see, well, what's offered in that area of town, and how could my student access that? So that would be a place to start. And then what Becky is saying too is important, like we also have a whole bunch of course codes that are just sitting sort of dormant that have been approved in the past, and we could add that um, information if we can find it easily. So yeah, thank you.
And, and to your point earlier, AP psych is offered at all the other high schools. Somewhere where, where, I think we've done a very good job recently of encouraging students to explore options at other high schools. I mean, you know, be a Hill High Spartan to the core, but if you take class at Glencoe, you can still be a Hill High Spartan.
Yes, I have noticed, I've seen some of the cross school classes, for sure.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you for your time and insight.
Okay, so our last course proposal is IB Language Abenishio. This is presented by um, Robin Anderson Morehouse, who is currently a math teacher at um, Hillsborough High School. She does teach the IB math classes, um, but she is also a licensed Japanese teacher, which will make sense to you in a minute.
Ira shame say. Konbawa. Good evening, everyone. Um, my name's Robin, and I am here to um, propose the IB Language Abenishio course. So first I'd like to talk about some of my motivation for bringing this proposal today. Uh, usually when I introduce myself to my students at the beginning of the year, I mentioned that I lived in Japan for five years. Um, and that I'm also certified to teach Japanese. And usually a small handful of my students ask me, why don't we have a Japanese class at Hillsborough High School? So, um, this year I decided to experiment and see if that small handful of state, of students maybe is of really a wider population in our school that has interest in Japanese. We have a special period on Thursdays and Fridays called Spartan Academy, when students can choose to either get support or to engage in an enrichment activity. So I decided to offer an enrichment activity called Let's Learn Basic Japanese. And twenty students signed up for it. We had a lot of fun and I surveyed them to ask if they would like to have a actual course where they could earn a grade at Hillsborough High School. And all of those students who I surveyed in the Spartan Academy course, um, said that they were interested. So that was my main motivation for bringing this course forward today. So the IB Language Abenishio course is a beginning level course. Um, and as you saw in Ashley's circle diagram earlier today, students who want to pursue the IB diploma need to take courses in a variety of subjects. One of the barrier that some of our students face right now is that their for, is that their world language skills aren't at the level of our current IB language course offerings. So this course, since it's a beginning level course, would open up the access to the IB diploma to a wider um, a wider proportion of our students, um, because they could take it without any language background in Japanese. If they decided to study ASL in ninth and tenth grade, they could still join this IB course and be able to complete the IB diploma program requirements. Oh, let's see, ah. You can see the course themes on the screen. So there are five different themes in all Abenishio courses. Um, students need to be able to learn to talk about their personal lives as well as society in general and some of the global issues that we face. Um, so I think that's all that I have to say, thank you very much.
Hello. So, um, for C A, C C A C's feedback, um, we asked about if there could be local and community connections. Uh, Kyukyori, Japan is a sister city of Hillsborough. Um, there's culture, uh, the Cultural Arts Program Manager at the Portland Japanese Garden is an HSD parent. So we just kind of were snowballing ideas of like how to make connections. Um, and we also asked if this meant that we are expanding our language offerings in Hillsborough School District, and the answer was yes. So um, we didn't really have a lot of like feedback questions for this because we were gung ho on board. All fourteen of us were like, yes, please.
Any questions?
Yes, I am totally down with this, one hundred percent. I didn't go as far in my education of Japanese to get certified to teach, but it is in the heart. Um, are, will they be exposed to basic katakana, hiragana, and then some elementary kanji as well?
Yes, um, the IB exam includes all four skills, uh, reading, writing, speaking and listening. So students will need to know the hiragana, the katakana, and also some of the basic kanji.
Okay, sorry, I'm totally jazzed. Ask me, I will come and join you teaching, I'm loving it, thank you very much.
I think one, you got a question?
Yes, I have a question.
Give me the microphone closer.
Yep. So I was looking under the materials in there. So will the students have their own individual materials or who makes that decision? I saw there were a couple of different options under there, but who makes the decisions that the kids would have? Um, the, their own material that they can keep versus having a laminated copy that gets reused?
Um, well, I think that it's a, all of us who decide was my understanding. First of all, if the course gets approved and if our budget gets approved, um. Okay.
Once it's approved, then we'll look at what the materials are that are available on the timeline, we need them. And then to what extent they fit into our budget. Um, I am always a proponent of using our budget for consumables that students get to have and keep and take with them. So to the extent we can make that work, that would be our priority.
Okay, thank you. Um, also in the course proposal, there was something about the Spanish Abishina, is that part of this as well or?
Hi, me again, um, uh, yes, so we currently offer French and Spanish B level, which is essentially that higher level of access. And um, we have noticed that students maybe will take ASL for the first two years and then not be able to really access the full IB diploma. So being able to have the ability to also offer Abenishio for Spanish or French, um, because we already have that teaching capacity would further allow, you know, more students who might be interested in doing the full diploma access to that if Japanese isn't their language that they're interested in.
Okay, so you mentioned the ASL, so is that always the route? Or I mean, what's the difference with the kids taking like a level one Spanish class, ninth, tenth, and then jumping into the IB?
Yeah, it's a good question. So the Abenishio course is really intended for like first exposure. So it's maybe the equivalent of like a Spanish one, Spanish two course. So if students had the ability to do like a Spanish one, Spanish two, we would send them that way into our higher level IB courses. A lot of times we see students who have taken ASL, or we have a number of transfer students who come in with different languages that we don't offer. Or I have juniors who are only looking at Spanish two or French two. And I, we don't have the time to get them that language experience. So the Abenishio kind of comes in clutch to help us be able to fulfill that diploma requirement.
Great, thank you so much.
Other questions?
Um, I have a general question, uh, I heard you mention uh, just uh, putting courses, the IB courses uh, through uh, Hillsborough High School, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Uh, but uh, how would uh, is there any plan to expanding it to other high schools, the, the other three high schools?
At this time, no, um, we, it, it is, it is a very different experience to offer IB um, than it is to offer AP, right? And so um, it requires um, what is it, every three years?
Ashley, that?
Every five years, you have to go through a recertification process. Um, it is um, requires that like, for instance, there's not necessarily an AP coordinator at our other three buildings in the same way that Hill High has a IB coordinator with Ashley to help organize the system and the structure. So if you look at a lot of our area districts, it's pretty proportional, um, what we have in Hillsborough School District with one of the four being an IB school and the rest being AP. So if you were to look at Beaverton, I believe like two of their schools um, are um, are IB schools with the rest of the high schools offering AP, same thing with Portland Public. So you tend to see um, less proportion of IB schools in a larger district. With that said, uh, when we have students, um, we do have some students who in our other feeders at eighth grade who do choose to transfer to Hill High as ninth graders because it has the IB program. So that is something that we open up, that if you're a student who went to Evergreen Middle School, you're planning to go to Glencoe High School, but you really are interested in IB, you could potentially look at going to Hill High on transfer.
Um, another question, um, so if, you know, I go to Liberty and if I wanted to take a IB course at Hill High, how would the transportation port look like work?
Yeah.
We have a shuttle that takes students for blocked classes in the AM. Um, so you could potentially ride a bus to the fairgrounds and then get on the Hill High bus and go to Hill High and then shuttle back at lunchtime to Liberty, but it would have to work out with your schedule and the offering the other high school.
Yeah, because I do take the shuttle bus and it takes around twenty minutes uh, to get from Liberty to the, to the airport where my class is. And would this be like a one period schedule? And if it is, how will the conflict look like and how will we make it like, so it's more flexible?
It might not work out. Yeah. Yeah.
At Liberty, since they offer the arrows, thanks.
Good. No, I mean, I'm not being sarcastic, I just, we do try to be flexible and we do different transportation arrangements, but the shuttle is imperfect in its design. So it's usually for CPE programs that are available like at the airport.
And it's pretty rare for a student to drop in for one IB. Like IB is a pretty structured program where if you're in the program, you're part of the structured approach, right?
I know of one kid who's doing it right now. Students can take à la carte IB courses, I know one kiddo who comes to us, I think from Century.
The, today is not the, uh, is all the questions asked and answered.
Even if you want to go, you let me know, we'll get you there.
Uh, today's not the day to answer this question, but you know, uh, more than one, more than two, so a few of our constituents, it's not my opinion, I'm just saying, this is a question we get frequently. In an AP centric US, what is the value to continue offering or having such a focus on IB? And are the kids in the IB program at a disadvantage? You know, so don't need to answer today, you can, you can give me, you can give me your talking points if you'd like. But you know, if you, it, people who follow the activities of the board pretty closely have often asked us, what is the benefit of continuing to offer IB at just one school as, if it's so great, why not others? America tends to be pretty apicentric, so yeah, sure, cameras on, if you want to give us a little something, go ahead. This, but I just want to put you on the spot to answer, to speak for the whole program today.
We might, um, this might provoke a longer conversation. And then um, we would, Ashley and Becky would actually be two people that I would invite if the board sure, wills us to create a presentation that would allow you to understand more deeply why.
Yeah, we're talking about these classes, today's not the day for, I'm, um, yep, I think my colleagues have probably heard these questions as well. And so it may be something we want to chat about in the future, Board.
That'd be great, yeah, please let me know.
Thank you. Is everybody good? Thank you so much. Hot, one of the highlights of the year, always hearing about our new programs.
Absolutely.
I do, I do have a question, um, where did you live in Japan? Angle, okay, all right, I lived in Osaka, yes.
And I'm excited for more AP classes. So my, my humble brag, my son is about to graduate from the University of Illinois Chicago in May, well, on track due. They were on strike until yesterday, but they're back. And I think the, one of the primary reasons he's graduating on time is because of the AP credits he graduated with from Century. Whether the transferring, you don't have to take calculus or whatever, like uh, less important than not having to take the class was having that cushion of coming in with credit hours, that he didn't have to crush himself with eighteen credits every semester to try to graduate. So, you know, I'm, I'm super grateful to the Hillsborough School District for sending my kids. you know, I'm, I'm super grateful to the Hillsborough School District for setting my kids up for success that way.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, Beth has an update on the strategic planning process update. You going over there? Stand over here.
Hello.
There you go.
Um, it's actually going to be Lauren giving the update and she is joining us virtually. So I'll invite her to take the floor.
Terrific. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you great. Thank you.
Oh, terrific. It's been really fun listening into all the exciting courses that are coming on. Um, it's wonderful to be with you all again. We're excited to share where we are. Um, and it looks like um, if we can, I wanted to start by just kind of talking us through the work to date and sharing with you um, kind of the first visualizations that are coming out from the work that's been produced. So um, it looks like if you could, whomever is managing the visuals, um, I'd love to start just by, if we could scroll in just to the center, um, piece here, uh, with the portrait. Yeah, scroll up just a little bit. Very well done.
Us following along in the packet, it looks like we're looking at the
Yeah, I wanted to start with, with the
Center spread, not
Center spread, yeah, not the presentation to start. Yeah, so I wanted to, um, just share, um, kind of where we are with, um, the current work and the current iteration. Um, we've made a lot of strides. I'm very, um, excited to be sharing this work with you. So the first thing I wanted to update you all is we have our revised, um, Hillsborough, um, High School District, a portrait of a graduate. And you'll see that, um, the, the big kind of differences and the whole, um, what was shared is that they're, they've settled on four qualities. Um, in terms of thinking about the portrait of a high school graduate. So we have self empowered learners, inquisitive scholars, community connected contributors, and your collaborative communicators. Um, this sits at the center with, you know, the attribute statements. And I know you've seen this, um, all multiple times. Um, but really the team kind of came to this idea of like, let's consider um, how we represent our vision for our students as a graphic, um, that's as a tree, right? Growing, um, growing an almost like a tech tree coming up. So I want to share that. And if you can scroll down um, to just a little bit, um, underneath we have, this is actually a perfect page to stay on. This is a great page to stay on. Thank you. Underneath the tree, um, you have, the story is really like, how are we going to get there? Like, what do we need to do as a system to make sure that we're going to accomplish our goals, um, and our vision for the young people in our system. And so we have pillar A, um, which is our teaching and learning pillar around culturally responsive teaching and learning. You have pillar B, which is around your, uh, strong and safe family and community relationships. Pillar C, which is around your exceptional staff and pillar D, which is your culture of continuous improvement. Um, and so this, this portion on the left for your portrait is really all around some of the more lasting vision that the community has come up with around both what we envisioned for all students um, in Hillsborough School District and what are the foundation we're going to stand on and build on to ensure that all students get there. Over on the right in this display, you have for this particular plan, right? What are our five goals that we are focusing in on for our students? And so those goals are focused on your success in the early years, ensuring that all students are safe and supported learners. Um, that students have access and opportunity, that they develop critical thinking and problem solving, and that they graduate ready for career, college, and life. And so I shared with you this just so you can kind of see how the, how the portrait tells a story before I dive into the PowerPoint and kind of go through some of the mechanics pieces. Um, there are a few versions just to share, um, just some, uh, we'd love to welcome any feedback and thoughts on seeing the visualization. Um, but I will switch over to the PowerPoint and just kind of walk you through um, where we are and what our next steps are and just open it up for questions. Um, so when the PowerPoint will come up.
There we go.
Thank you.
Our point, it's a PDF and there's slight difference in the technology.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought I'd also shared the PowerPoint. My apologies. That's okay. So if you can, um, page down, please. Uh, just to the next page, we're going to, um, pull through, sorry. So the plan itself, um, is we would, I would say at this point, um, we're at about ninety-five percent drafted, um, and ready to be sharing out, um, and gathering feedback from the larger community. Um, the plan is encompassed with, um, three main components. So first, there's going to be a com- portion that's really about how did we engage, um, the diverse voices and perspectives. We'll talk about kind of the strategic planning framework, but then the plan itself centers on student learning, what we want for all students, instructional effectiveness, like how are we going to ensure teaching and learning and all the systems that support instruction are in place to achieve the goals? And then finally, what is the infrastructure we need to support both effective instruction and student learning? Um, you can just scroll forward. You've seen the PowerPoint is similar. We can scroll actually, um, pretty far down. Um, you can keep paging through. It's the same PowerPoint that we've taken a look at a number of times. You'll see the strategic plan. Um, now we have, you know, the folks who have participated um, on the teams and just wanted to take the play, time to recognize the time commitment investment for the core planning team. Um, we can move forward to the next one, the student voice team. Um, move on forward, our instructional focus team. Um, and also, um, the alignment team of the community partners. And finally, the board itself, um, you all and your investment and time and energy in the process. And we can scroll forward. Um, so one more. So the primary purpose we've talked about is kind of alignment of how do we move the system into alignment and the plan giving a, a path forward towards your goals for students to can page forward. And we'll page forward. Um, these are just, these are slides I know you're familiar with. Um, so we'll just keep them in, but we keep them all in as the, um, kind of the construct. Reminder around the strategic planning framework, the process that we went through, which um, you know, I was realizing we kicked off with students in April of twenty twenty-two. Um, starting with, um, gathering student data. So both the surveys that were administered as well as the student voice focus groups that were, um, conducted. Um, but all of the planning teams have gone through a process of looking at the current state of student data, understanding and diving into the strengths and areas of concerns, root causes in order to come up with the plan itself. Next slide. And so your, um, plan has these components, uh, that are going to be part of it. One, we'll share in a moment is this our promise statement. You have the portrait, this, um, goals and measures for student success, performance benchmarks, the pillars and practices. And then the strategy map and roadmap for discipline implementation. Go to the next slide, please. So we'll just scroll through. One thing I will go to the next slide, which is, um, we're looking at a revised, um, kind of the team is proposing moving from a traditional kind of mission vision statement, not getting rid of it. But what would be the Hillsborough School District promise to all students, um, and families? And so uh, one, uh, iteration is to know, value, empower every student. Um, another way of saying it is every student known, valued, and empowered. Um, so those are kind of for discussion and continued refinement, um, as we get more feedback from the community, you can go forward. Um, you've seen the goal, you've seen the portrait. This is the, just the basic text of it, um, and next slide. And you've seen, uh, your five goals. Uh, what is new information, next slide, is, uh, the refined, uh, metrics, um, for those goals. So the cabinet um, and has gone through and has refined and ensured that the metrics that are in place are, um, both representative, they continue what the core planning team came forward and there's just some refinement to make sure there was alignment to ODE um, requirements. And what has not been determined yet is where are the priority, um, focal groups that will be looked at for each um, of those, uh, goals. Um, so that's one piece that we'll see in the final plan that is not quite complete yet. You can go forward. To the next slide. And then there will be specific performance targets. It's a blank slide as it is now. On slide twenty-four is for performance targets for kind of like this is a four year plan. Uh, where are we right now and where will we be specifically in four years on key metrics? Okay, you can go forward. Um, we have our pillars. You can keep, scroll forward and the updated slides here, one more. Um, get into our practices. So, um, the team has refined what the instructional practices that are, that are going to be developed across the Hillsborough School District, which undergird the, um, teaching and learning system. Next slide. Um, so these have been refined since you last saw them. Um, so we wanted to make sure you had the most up to date, uh, version of those. There's a set of teaching practices. So what are the, the practices regarding teaching across the system? That will be, um, supported and developed. Next practice, our next slide, excuse me. The leadership practices that support those teaching practices. And then finally, the last slide, um, with this section is the organizational practices that ensure that the leaders and the teachers have what they need, um, to be successful. Next slide. Finally, we get to our strategic map. So what are our strategic priorities? And these are organized around your pillars. Next slide. So we have, um, three strategic priorities per pillar. Um, so for culturally responsive teaching and learning, the focus is on aligned instructional systems, relevant personalized learning and belonging engagement. For a strong and safe family and community relationships, you're thinking and focusing on systemic, multi-level communication. You're focused on cultivate and grow trusting relationships, sustain partnerships. For exceptional staff, a workforce reflective of your community, systems of staff development, sustainable retention of staff. And for pillar D, continue, culture of continuous improvement, you're looking at a culturally inclusive vision for success, data systems and practices that support cycles of improvement. And finally, a culture of collective efficacy. You'll notice on the left, there are spaces where, um, one of the things that we'll be putting in are the sort of definitional statements for what each of those, what's meant by each of those strategies, um, and priorities. Next slide. For each of the areas, like each pillar, there are key sets of, um, system wide key actions, uh, that will ensure the um, the, the attainment of the goals along these pillars. Um, they're all in red right now because there's still one pass through that we want to do, um, on some of the language. And then the second part is, uh, there's, just to also note, there still will be rounds of feedback, um, that we'll be gathering. Uh, final feedback from the, the community over the course of the next, um, month. Next slides, we can kind of go through it and that one. And then one more. And then one more. Um, and then what's the, one of the last pieces that we put together and, um, support, uh, in articulating is kind of we say the planning, well, it might be, um, you know, it's, it's, can't underestimate that the planning takes a very, a long time and a lot of engagement. The hard part is implementation. Right? And so what's been done is on the top, we suggest that you have your system wide strategic plan. But now, right, once that gets completed, you want to ensure that you have your annual improvement plans or your, your annual, you want to break it into a calendar nugget of what's going to happen next year regarding moving forward these key priorities. Um, and ensuring that we're moving the goals forward. And that's both by school and also by, um, the departments across the system. Uh, we also suggest a framework for like, what are the things that you're looking at every week, every month? Um, you know, biannually and how you use data. So this is something that um, we can develop, um, in further detail with, um, with you all, if you would like to kind of create your, um, your own vision for this particular, uh, framework of implementation. Next slide. So where are we heading? Uh, we just have a few next steps. Um, we're going to get final feedback on the draft plan from the staff and community. Uh, we're wrapping up the performance targets. Um, and then we want to, our internal deadline is to get the complete draft um, for you all to see just for more for comment and, um, review. And then we're going to be integrating feedback, um, to refine the plan based on both community feedback and then what gets shared with you all before we have the final draft to share with the board on three fourteen for first read. So that's where we are in the process. I welcome your questions, comments, thoughts, and considerations.
Beth is reaching for a microphone.
Oh, I
Another that?
I was going to get ready to help answer questions if possible, but I did want to say in case anybody's wondering and thinking, didn't we say we'd get kind of the first read version of the plan at the end of February so we could vote in March? Um, we thought it was really important to give a little bit of extra time for feedback. We didn't want it to feel as though staff and community didn't have an adequate opportunity to take another look at this while there was still time to incorporate their feedback. So we did draw it out a bit with the hope that what you see on March fourteenth is going to be really pretty final and solid. And we will plan to use that as we go into our budgeting process. So as long as everybody has an understanding of that, then we're in good shape.
Questions?
I appreciate the work that's been put into this so far. I think strategic planning is one of the most important things an organization can do. I also think that in many organizations, the planning isn't as effective as it could be because of the disciplined implementation component and um, whether the entire, the, there's such a large investment of time that goes into this. And I, and so I'm particularly interested in what had the implementation piece and the measurability and accountability pieces specific to this planning process, because I think a lot of iterative improvements that our school district, uh, employees and leaders would move forward with, they would likely do as a matter of normal course. And so I want to see that but because we've invested so much time into this process, we're getting above and beyond the ordinary. We're getting specific targeted measurable results. So I'm looking forward to that part particularly.
Yeah, well said. Yeah, one of the, um, one of the things that we're going over with the cabinet in terms of looking at that, um, strategic priorities. Right? Is that we're seeing how like the actual work of the district, right? The work is embedded in there. And so not only will you want to be thinking for implementation around measuring your outcomes that you're getting with the students, but also what are the key milestones for the implementation of these strategic priorities? Based on those areas, right? Based on those departmental areas.
Erica?
Yeah, I think the question that I had was similar to Patrick in regards to the implementation phase and also thinking more for our staff, if there's going to be a, uh, a project management component where somebody is going to be in charge of throughout the four years managing this to, to, um, see how we're doing implementing wise and also having maybe a change management plan that goes along, that includes communication and deliverables, milestones, all of that for us to be updated.
Yeah, Lauren, I, do you mind if I take that one?
I'll do it, yeah.
Um, Erica and Patrick, I really appreciate those questions because that's what is like the, the really important part of the work that we're doing right now, especially in the Office for School Performance is what are our metrics? How are we going to measure them? And then how do we see targets for all students in HSD over the course of four years and beyond? And then what are the gap closing type of targets and trajectories that we want for students in groups who have con- consistently been underserved by our systems in third grade reading, attendance, graduation rates, et cetera. So right now we're building charts that would show us what our goals are. And then we'll put together teams that are in charge of each one of those metrics, the leaders who are closest to that work. Um, family input, uh, teacher input, student input, so that we know the change ideas that will help us get to those outcomes. So I'm really excited about that same piece and you don't really see it tonight in what's, um, being shown in the presentation, but that's coming as we finalize it. It's also going to double as our grant submission to the state of Oregon under the Student Success Act, the Student Investment Account Measure Ninety-eight. All those metrics will be the same things that we show the return on investment for those dollars. How did those, um, change outcomes in HSD? So there's a high level of accountability in Oregon that we're going to, that we've used the strategic planning process to get us to those data points. And then we'll, we'll be using those locally. And then the strategic plan will serve as our map to the future. So Lauren and I have worked really closely in the theory behind why it is that the integrated guidance from ODE helps us this way. And I shared with the board earlier that the, the ODE document encourages us to adopt a strategic plan that backs our grant submissions to ODE, not just do that as a one off. So I'm really proud of what Lauren's been able to do with us, which is a broad community outreach and a needs assessment that leads us to a plan. It's really comprehensive and also doubles as that grant submission to ODE, which will be a new thing. And it'll be a two and four year cycle moving forward in Oregon. So thank you for understanding us, Lauren.
It's been a pleasure. It's been a really great process.
Other questions?
Thank you for the vision of the portrait of a student. Um, I admit that when we started, we saw some really slick ideas from other districts and we kept Um, I admit that when we started, we saw some really slick ideas from other districts and we kept thinking, how is it going to be for us? And I think you hit it. I really like it. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And thank you for giving so much of your time to the process. Being the board representative in in the uh core planning team, right? Is that what you're on? I think that's what it is, yeah. So thank you, Nancy, for that. All right. We have structured plans to get the community feedback, I'm sure, right?
Uh, the plan right now is uh Lauren is going to develop a Google form with kind of embedded snapshots of different aspects of the plan. So it's like, here's this piece. How does it land with you? What feedback do you have? And then here's this piece. So it'll be, it'll be in a Google form format so that staff, students, parents, community members, anyone can access it. And I'm not a hundred percent sure if we're going to have it in time to launch it next Monday or the Monday after, but we'll give at least two weeks for people to provide that feedback.
Great. All right, thank you.
All right.
Our next item is
Go to bed now, Lauren.
Oh, I will, don't worry.
Is she back east?
I'm not, but I've been, it's, yeah, you know, I'm on your, I'm on your time for once, so that's take good care, everyone.
But I think Carla was discussing the most, calendar. She had microphones, is that my call, all right?
Yes, I do. Um, so this is our twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. It's going to be uh, we have gone through a lot of feedback and input and we have landed on having a post Labor Day start. And so we've kind of gone through the bullets that are listed uh in the situation page. I do want to say that um school is actually starting uh September fifth, not the seventh in twenty-twenty-three, and then Wednesday, September sixth. So just a little, um, I made a, maybe made a little mistake on that in my calendar work, so thank you for your grace. Um, also, we are just making, just uh sharing that we want to make sure that we're uh establishing um space for staff development. We've had long conversations about that and from the feedback and input from staff, there is a desire for that. So we've targeted the first, the last Monday in September, the twenty-fifth is a designated day for both classified and licensed staff. Um, that would be um a professional development day for them. And then everything else kind of is pretty much the same that mirrors this current calendar. And then the last day of uh for students would be Thursday, June thirteenth, and then for licensed staff would be Friday, the fourteenth. And um we were able to include this professional development, staff development day uh and still meet um our Division twenty-two hours or time. Are there any questions?
Not surprising. We've been talking about this for a few sessions, so. Um, so Rose, it's, we have a policy on when we need to approve it, right? So eh, looking forward, if we're talking about maybe going to two-year calendar adoption in the fall, so twenty-two-three, great, awesome, first reading. Uh, if we don't have any problems with the first reading, we approve it the next regular session at the end of February, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, and if we're thinking about going to a two-year cycle, would we have to implement a policy change before we start thinking about that in the fall? So it it feels like, so there's the, there's definitely something in policy. So we vote to adopt it. So that's probably defined in policy somewhere. So we may need to, if we're thinking about going to a two-year adoption cycle and start discussing that in the fall, sometime between now and the fall, we may need to consider a policy revision. Oh, oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, it says no later than A, the April report, meaning.
Oh, all right. It doesn't specify how many years or whatever. Okay. Oh, so that's flexibility. All right.
And just to be, to level set, those who you are listening to us and you have not been involved in all of our conversations, the idea and the impetus for u- u- using a two-year cycle is that we don't have to do this every year. It is absolutely ludicrous that we do this every year. We should at least be able to look forward and people can do planning for more than a two-year cycle. Unfortunately, our past is that we do it annually. So that is the reason why we're having conversations about potential policy changes so that we can update ourselves as we evolve and we grow. And that's what we're trying to move to a two-year.
And I'm sure the new board will have discussions about this and you'll have to do a lot more research and if we decide to start align, if we decide to align with the neighboring districts.
Yes.
As we're leaning towards doing, you know, that'd be something the board will discuss as we go forward.
Yeah, I think that would be great to bring that back in the fall.
Yeah. All right. Next report is the financial report. Michelle, do you have anything to add other than what's in our packet? No? There you go.
No, I have nothing to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Somebody have any questions? Monique?
Uh, I do. Um, so just on the incidents, the student incident reports, so it seems like it was a big jump in October and then we had uh five serious. So was that tied to a single incident or?
No, I think that was a combination of all of our students being back together in one space at the same time and um probably the addition of activities. Notice how we've, you know, fully implemented our fall sports this year. So just having all of those students and staff in the same location. Um, there is some detail, most of our incidents are related to slips and falls. So we're monitoring those um as they're coming in and I'm happy to get more specific information on those, probably location. And um, but you know, nothing identifiable, but I can dig into that a little bit more. You can see the following period, we're kind of backing off again. So I think that our buildings are doing a great job just being really responsive to those incidents.
Okay, just didn't know if there was a common denominator to that and curious. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, so the, the start of the report, I noticed each month it has the same language about the support framework and the systemic solutions and an example uh in Alex. Uh, is that an example that's quoted for somewhere? Or is that something you've written about what we're doing?
It's a combination, actually. Patrick, thank you for asking. Um, many months ago, uh, over sixty-four months ago, as a district, we went through some pretty comprehensive training um by the Center of Educational Leadership and how we could support our building principles as academic leaders. And in that, our operations departments continue to collaborate in different ways. And so, you know, every month I kind of bring forward another way that we're trying to make our services better to serve the schools in any way. And so specifically, example sixty-four, we have the Independent Field Print Site Plan. So right now, our field print, which is all of our background fingerprinting is tied to a state contract and we have to send people we want to volunteer or hire away from us and they have to wait for an appointment. And they go in and they get that done. And that's traditionally worked okay for us. But um recently, we've experienced some challenges with that and we reached out to field print on a national level. And so we can contract with them directly for that service. So this, that's a good example of if we work in our silos, we wouldn't recognize that's an issue that we need to address.
Absolutely. I appreciate uh an understanding of those examples that I can communicate on.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked.
Other questions for Michelle? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our next section, which is action items. And we had a presentation in our work session regarding the Northwest Regional Education Service District Local Service Plan. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion regarding that?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the resolution approving the Northwa- Northwest Regional ESD Local Service Plan for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second. It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director McGuire that the Board of Directors adopt the resolution approving the Northwest Regional Education Service District Local Service Plan for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. So any further discussion? For what's worth, we did have quite a bit of discussion upstairs. So all right, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Kim?
Hi.
Erica Lopez?
Hi.
Patrick McGuire?
Hi.
Monique Ward?
Hi.
Nancy Thomas?
Hi.
Mark Watson?
Hi. Motion carries. All right, next up, would anybody like to make a motion regarding the course proposed we heard of last month?
Just a clarifying question. Are those two separate motions for one for each one?
Yeah, one for each, uh, one for each of the courses.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course Diesel Mechanic Program of Study.
Second.
Been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Kim that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course Diesel Mechanics Program of Study. Is there any further discussion? I'm excited to get that classroom on our new transportation center up and running. Uh, when we, when we, we're building it, we envisioned that this day would come and yeah, I'm excited to see it be there. So that's my comment. That's my additional comment.
Chair.
No, it was just comment time. Anybody else? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
She and Kim?
Hi.
Erica Lopez?
Hi.
Patrick McGuire?
Hi.
Monique Ward?
Hi.
Nancy Thomas?
Hi.
Mark Watson?
Hi. Motion carries. Would anybody like to make a motion on the next course proposal?
I move that the Board of Directors approve proposed course data science.
Second.
Been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course data science. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Patrick, I think he has fan first, but yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, uh, yeah, I have a little, a few things to say about this. Um, so this was brought forward and our leadership team, our educators, uh, provided a lot of information and research. It was very interesting to read through. Um, we had a member of our Curriculum Advisory Committee uh who I served with for many years. I know he's a person who is very thorough and and earnest. Um, come forward with some concerns and questions. And so I read through all the material that that he shared, which was very helpful and thought provoking as well. Um, and so I guess starting, I think for a broad frame, it's a little bit surprising that there are multiple perspectives on math coursework as opposed to something that more directly touches on the diversity of our community. Uh, but um, I think it, but a part it may be caused by, everyone is a little bit different on on the threshold of how much evidence they need to change or to pursue a new um pathway. We all need a certain amount of evidence to change something, but uh maybe some people are want a lot of evidence and and other people are more willing to, when they see there's concerns about the current method to try and something that the new research is showing. But in any event, in this specific case, um, a lot of the questions seem to be around whether the new curriculum, math curriculum opportunity will uh diminish or reduce the offering of the existing curriculum. Um, and so in reading the uh material that was provided by those who were uh raising questions about the data science, um, it seemed to me that there's not really that big of a a difference between different perspectives because our uh the proposers and and our educators um share that they're not seeking to eliminate or reduce the traditional math uh offering, but rather to uh offer different pathways that maybe will better suit to different students and different um not just the students, but what they're hoping to achieve and what they, what they feel they want to pursue. And in the open letter that was shared with us by the 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 Community Curriculum Advisory Member, this, this is the, what was said, it says, there cannot be a one-size-fits-all approach to K twelve math education. Students should be offered multiple pathways and timelines to explore mathematics. And it says, one of those should be the option to obtain fundamental preparation for college level STEM, including calculus. And then it says, students should have the opportunity to take those classes at varying grade levels of middle and high school when they're ready. So it seems like those who are concerned, um, are saying that they think there should be multiple pathways and timelines. And it sounds like that's what those who are proposing this data science course also believe, that we should continue to offer the traditional suite and also uh have this data science, this exciting new opportunity for folks to participate in. So I don't, I think there are definitely things in the world of education that different people from different backgrounds will have genuine uh different perspectives on. But in this case, I don't see there being that much different perspective. I think everyone agrees that um, there should be multiple pathways and multiple timelines that best fit the students and our educators and our counselors can help our students to see what's going to be best for them. So I want to just put our community who may be viewing this at ease that if there's ever a move to eliminate traditional math sequencing, uh certainly make the board aware of it, but there's no there's no intention in that regard, as far as I can tell right now, but rather it's just offering more pathways and opportunities. And so that's why with appreciation to everyone who sent in emails to the board and uh it's very good information. I ultimately think that approving this is in line with all the information, yeah, that I've seen on all sides.
Monique, I believe you had something?
Yes, please. So um, thank you, Patrick. I, I agree. We, we definitely need some um additional pathways. I do have some concerns. Uh, one of them was uh the, in the, in the proposal itself, and I think these are some of the concerns that may have been raised by C C CAC, I'm not sure. I did go back and look at those minute notes and um I saw that there was also a item added to our board. Um, not necessarily the packet, but the slide presentations and stuff that we get um in there. And I have not had a chance to read that, so I saw that was posted this afternoon. Um, but there was a point in the proposal on page three, section four, that said, long-term, um, this would replace algebra two. And so the question was, what happens to the calculus pathway? Option, um, if that does indeed become the case. Um, I also had some concerns about the, I, I don't know how the C C A C, all the meetings are run, but there were issues brought up. It was a split vote. There were issues brought up, but I didn't see any future meetings that those things are go back to be addressed. So is that something that normally happens or does not happen or? Um, because there were points that were brought up back in the November meeting.
Rose, go on, good.
Yeah, I just wanted, um, I just wanted to make sure, are you asking me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Travis, yes.
No, that's okay. Um, I did, in the form of trying to be helpful and transparent, we did put a document in the folder that you referenced um today. And that is including the question that you had, Monique, about um what would be replaced if we forecasted a section of data science?
Right.
Um, and then uh, the rest of that document consists of responses to questions or comments that were made at the December sixth board meeting. And so in an effort to share all the information with all board members, we added that document. And most of this information is compiled by Holly McNamee, who is there, and Becky Kingsmith, who was there on December sixth. And I feel like they answered most of the questions, but um, I did want to click through where you can find information in that document that we shared today. The answer to your question directly, though, is um, we don't go back to the C C A C with answers to their questions. Usually, what we do is uh create those minutes for you to review so that your decision can be informed by the questions that were asked. For example, tonight, we um Shira characterized what the questions were and what the answers were so that you could be informed about that conversation because you don't have as much time to deliberate live at the meetings as the committee does. Does that answer your question about the C C A C process?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, can I take one minute and, or did you want to keep going?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, sure.
Chair Watson? Okay, the, in the document, just really briefly, there's a, the question about um data science potentially adding a section of that. And there would be maybe one fewer section of financial algebra or statistics than on AP version. And Monique, I think I emailed that directly to you.
You did.
And then after that, there's the open letter in question from California is hyperlink for the board to review if you didn't have a chance. Patrick, thank you for reviewing um the content there. Your analysis of that situation is spot on. And then there's um some additional resources that would sort of rebut the claims that are made in that open letter in California. That's been in the news lately. Um, the second part of it is the course progression in HSD because I think the, we described what the course progression is and where this fits in the third year. And there's a graphic that might help you understand that. Um, if that wasn't clear, uh, when Becky and Holly and I were answering those questions. And then finally, there was a question about the um some data from like districts in Oregon who have piloted or implemented data science. And so from Portland Public, Ben Lapine and Salem Kaiser, you can see some brief comments from our um, reaching out to them. That's just a document that we wanted right up until Sunday to make you all aware that these are the questions that we've gotten from you all. And then uh make sure that that of, the links are all there for you to research if you'd like to. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Hi.
Erica Lopez?
Hi.
Patrick McGuire?
Hi.
Monique Ward?
I'll abstain.
Nancy Thomas?
Hi.
Mark Watson?
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right. On to our next, oh, back to my teller tab. And our next agenda item is, uh, throughout the course of the prop, bond process, we've been doing this a few different times, consolidating tax lots that still remain. Some of our properties are under two and they should really should be under one. So really all, all we're doing here is, um, consolidating the tax lots for Tobias Elementary and it takes two motions to do it. Um, or I guess I should be asking Casey, who wants that? Is this Casey's department?
Yeah, I'm, uh, so then for added, I go ahead. This is, uh, this is exactly similar to what we've brought, uh, before you several times throughout the bond. It really is, as we're going through these different schools and projects, for example, uh, this one at Tobias still has the Reedville School District on the deed. So one of the motions is to, uh, you know, correct that and then consolidate. There was two tax lots there. This is to consolidate our, our property into one. So it's really, uh, cleaning up the record and, and documents as we go through that. Um, it really is as simple as that.
Anybody have questions?
No, but the legal clarity is appreciated.
Would anybody like to make the first motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the bargain and sale deed for lot consolidation to create one tax lot at Tobias Elementary School.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors approve the bargain and sale deed for lot consolidation. Create one tax lot at Tobias Elementary School. Is there any further discussion? All right. Rose can call the roll please.
And Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right. Next one up.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the resolution attesting to Hillsborough School District 1J ownership of Tobias Elementary School and removing the reference to Washington County School District number 29. Thank you.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors approve the resolution attesting to Hillsborough School District 1J ownership of Tobias Elementary School and removing the rest reference to Washington County School District number 29. Is there any further comments?
That once upon a time in Washington County?
Yeah, is that, is that what Reedville was called before HSD consolidation? It was Washington County School of 29?
There's love in here. There's love in here.
Well, we could do a public record search.
Uh, Ed. Yeah. Any, uh, further comments? Rose, can you call the roll please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next one, uh, well, Casey or Michelle, I'll let you set the stage and then I'll explain some stuff.
Um, we have, the next two items are two, um, exact similar projects, uh, for HVAC system, um, DDC control replacement. Um, the way that, the easy way to explain this is that the units themselves are fine. We're going in and replacing all of the inner workings of the brains and controls so we can more adequately, um, control temperature, airflow, those types of things. The units that we have in these two schools are made by a specific vendor. That vendor then has specific, um, contractors that are trained and approved to do work on those, uh, units. This contract is for the approved vendor ECC, who is their only approved vendor in Oregon or Washington. That's why we have to go through, um, this approval process as a sole source, uh, to work on that. If we chose not to and brought in somebody else from another state, that the cost would be exponentially. And so that's why we have these findings of fact outlined on why, um, we're bringing these two projects to you. Um, in addition to the dollar amount, uh, that we're doing these projects for. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know it's a kind of complicated, uh, when it, when, when people that aren't in this realm, um, try to look at why we're doing one thing or another, but that's the basic reason why.
Actually, you didn't, you didn't mention that we could potentially void our warranty if we go outside of their
That's true.
Right. So that's what I was thinking. I'm like, we don't have a choice.
Correct. We, we would have to bring in another approved vendor from out of state of, but to, that are trained and approved the same manner. Basically.
So this is where I'm open to, I had planned to always take the temperature of the board and try to get a sense of what the board's preference is. Cause I don't necessarily have a preference. So in the past, we have often recessed our board meeting, convened a meeting of the contract review board to approve these issues that involve the contract us. At, so we are the contract review board. We are the same thing. Um, we've often recessed in the past, convened and then recontinued our meeting. Uh, over the course of many discussions with OSBA, legal counsel, state agencies regarding superintendent search and other things, it came up that we don't have to do that. We can continue to do that if we would like. It is so if the board would like to continue, uh, recessing our meeting and adjourning a contract review board, uh, meeting, we can do that. Or is apparently perfectly acceptable for us to just include in the motion that we are acting in our capacity as the contract review board. So I figured, uh, when Rose and I were discussing the agenda for today, we would put these in here, uh, using that new methodology today. And if that's fine. And if somebody would like to go back to the other way, I'm happy to consider that. But if we're all fine, we could just handle these in this way going forward. So, um, so if we're all comfortable with the idea of, I'm seeing a lot of head nods and stuff. So we're all comfortable with the idea of maybe using this method going forward. We can try it out tonight, see how we like it. And then decide going forward if we would like to separately conduct meetings of the contract review board.
So. I was gonna say, do we have, is there anything in our policy that says we have to do that?
No, that's
I mean, I know what you're saying with OSBA, but I'm saying, is there anything currently written in there that we would go through that process?
Rose checked everything and made sure like that the, this is 100% perfectly fine for us to do. And I think again, it's a con, like what I said upstairs, it's probably a consequence of us having crafted good policy before, like the, the issues upstairs where during the superintendent search, we thought we would have to do these things because OSBA suggested them. And then when we contacted the state agency, they're like, oh, you're already good. The, the way you guys conduct business generally is already covered. So th- this is just another one of those cases where, you know, probably didn't happen in my time. It probably happened before I got here, but I appreciate the work of our previous boards and setting us up in a good, solid position to do the right thing most of the time or all the time. But yeah. So, uh, if somebody would like to adjourn and become a contract today, happy to do that. Otherwise we can entertain a motion as crafted in your packet.
Sorry. On behalf, on behalf of the contract review board, I move that the Board of Directors, no.
The other way. Yeah. Okay.
On behalf of the contract.
No, it's all in there. It's in there.
Okay. So I move the, I move that the Board of Directors acting in the capacity of the local contractor review board, thanks very much, award the contract for Imlay Elementary School HVAC Controls Upgrade to Environmental Corp, Controls Corp ECC in the amount of $232,859.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors acting in the pa, capacity of the local contract review board, award the contract for Imlay Elementary School HVAC Controls Upgrade to Environmental Controls Corp ECC in the amount of $233,859. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that it's just more efficient to do it this way, I think for our board and I, it probably, it's not, um, in policy maybe that we should have done it that way. It was probably more of a practice of separating the task.
I, I think that's what Rose found out. Yeah. Was that our, our practice was perfectly fine, but so is this practice as well. So it may not have been more efficient today, but hopefully it will save generations of boards going forward.
Yeah.
That process. Once we establish this is the precedent of how we do it. Other comments?
If you'll, if you'll pardon my odd sense of humor, whenever I'm watching, I can see council or board of commissioners meeting and they, they do that. They adjourn. If you're being with the same people, it's a different, I always think they should like have fake mustaches or different hats or something. But yes, I think this is much, I think this is much more efficient.
We totally just got a hat. I could put a different hat if we wanted to adjourn. Any other comments?
Yes, I, I'd like to just, um, call out and thank Casey for, uh, in my email to him and stepping me through the statutes and how they were connected. I appreciate that very much.
Rose, can you please call the roll?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up, would somebody like to take a shot at the next one?
I move that the Board of Directors acting in the capacity of the local contract review board, award the contract for Witch Hazel Elementary School HVAC Controls Upgrade to Environmental Controls Corp ECC in the amount of 233,000, uh, 233,000,859 dollars.
Second.
It's been moved by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Kim that the Board of Directors acting in the capacity of the local contract review board, award the contract for Witch Hazel Elementary School HVAC Controls Upgrade to Environmental Control Corp ECC in the amount of $233,859. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you please call the roll?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Thank you colleagues for our little diversion. Appreciate it. All right. Now that concludes our action item portion of the meeting. I did want to, I was gonna maybe bring it up in the board time, but it feels like it might be a little bit of discussion. So I wanted to just, not to put you too much on the spot, Beth, but I don't think we'll have another meeting before some of these proposed dates to conduct possible perspectives. So do you wanna, do you want to bring that up a little or do you, you, uh, if you don't want to talk about it, I won't put you on the spot, but it feels like today's probably the day we should talk about it.
Yeah, I would love to land on those, um, both how many you would like to have and when you'd like to have. And if we can come to that decision, that'd be amazing. Then I can start.
So everybody knows what we're talking about. It was in the board update Friday. Okay.
So we, as you know, we have three positions that are up for election this May. And typically in an election year, we will host one or more sessions for prospective board members to come get information from sitting board members and from staff about what the commitment is like, what to expect, um, you know, get some sample, uh, board meeting agendas to review some materials from OSBA that they provide. So, um, just kind of throwing that out there to those of you who aren't currently up for election. Um, if you would be available, make yourselves available to something like that. We have identified four different dates. Kind of lunch hour timeframe seemed to work pretty well for the community. We've done these in the, in person in the past, but we also have the option to do them virtually. We could potentially do one in person and one virtually, or we could just hold one and, and make it either or. It's really, it's really up to you.
So yeah, in the, in the past, I think I've attended a couple and also like when I wasn't running. So it would be, I mean, you could, we could do whatever you want, but traditionally somebody who's running wouldn't attend the session. Um, so I guess it's for the rest of the four of us. Uh, do we want to have board member participation at these events where people who might think about running can come and get information about what it's like to be a board member? I, I, I found the one I attended before I ran pretty useful. And I was, uh, glad to be a contributor at other ones. I guess in the past, did we do one in the evening or were they always at lunchtime?
I think they've always been at lunchtime. I mean, certainly when they've been in person, they've always been at lunchtime.
All right. So, uh, Beth had proposed four dates and the board update. Um, I feel like two sessions is enough. Um, somebody have any sort of thoughts on that is two or four or three or one? Feels like two. Um,
I think having two and having one option be virtual would be, would be good. I know that, um, before I ran, I attended one in person. I found it really helpful. And then a couple of years ago, I attended one virtually as a board member. Uh, and I also, you know, there were a few folks who had attended that and, um, the virtual option, especially with COVID had made it more accessible, I think, to more community folks to attend. So I think one in person, one virtual.
Yeah, maybe just, uh, we usually have to involve our amazing technology team to have these meetings go so seamlessly when they're hybrid. Maybe just one in person, one virtual. So we don't have to put any extra burden on the technology team.
I think. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they do an amazing job, but most of my experience with hybrid type meetings, they're not as great.
We don't have to assist and I don't want to unnecessarily burden them. So.
I, I think if we do one face to face and one virtual and if people have questions. Cause it's an invaluable conversation, even though I didn't get a chance to participate in that. But it didn't mean I didn't have conversation with any of the people that want to.
Sure.
Yeah.
So the dates we've potentially identified are February 13th, 16th, 27th and March 3rd. So, uh, filing opens on February, I put it in there. Now I'm trying to go off memory. I think it opens February 4th and closes sometime mid-March. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it might be nice to do one of the two sessions that early week, that mid-February. And then the second one, that kind of last week of February, very beginning of March to catch people who are maybe making a last minute decision. What do you think?
Yeah, uh,
I like the 13th.
13th sounds good. And then, yeah, if we want to not pick a Monday, maybe then it's March 3rd. So they're not always, if they yeah, if Mondays are bad for a prospective candidate, then we pick a different date for the second time around. Like I said, it'd be the 16th or the 3rd.
The 3rd is a, is a Friday.
Is a Friday. Yeah. It's a little. And maybe that's the virtual one, right? Maybe in person, Monday, February 14th, 13th. And then Friday, March 3rd and
Or we can, I mean, we could certainly do them both the week of the 13th if you'd prefer.
I think you should space them out. I think it would give people an opportunity. If you do one early, one late.
I like the idea of spacing them out.
I agree. The Monday and Friday.
Monday, the 13th, Friday, the 3rd. How about that?
Okay.
You put them out there. You must be okay with those, I'm guessing.
Yep.
All right.
Sounds great. I will start advertising that in next week's hot news and then we'll just make sure the word gets out and people can attend if they'd love.
And how many board members do you want to participate in?
Um, I think it'd be great if we kept it less than three. I mean, there's four of you who are not up for election. So, I mean,
Just a couple.
Yeah, just a couple is plenty.
Yeah. One even, I mean, even one's good. Right? Yeah. Even one to just, Beth has a bunch of information she covers that is a lot of good general information. And then, yeah, like what we're usually there for is when they go, but what's it really like?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking of two and two because we're four and not.
Is the, then is the 13th going to be the in-person one? And then the third is going to be
Virtual.
The virtual one?
Sure.
Sure. I mean, it makes no difference to me. The only thing I worry about with Monday meetings is that people kind of forget over the weekend.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, we'll throw it out there and they'll come if they come.
So how did we come up with an option of the 13th?
They, I really wanted to make sure Mike had the opportunity to be there. So we were looking at his calendar.
And the 14 Tuesdays, a board meeting. So.
Oh, no.
We really have a board meeting on Valentine's Day.
I know.
Oh my goodness. Wait. Really?
Yeah.
I'm not that romantic. Everybody knows me. Knows I'm not that romantic. It's fine.
Did you?
March 17th.
What? No, it's the schedule. It's a, she knows I'm not romantic. It's fine. She's been married to me for 26 years. I think she knows who I am by now. All right.
Sorry.
So we're good. And we, all right. Sorry to put you on the spot, but it felt like
No, no, I'm glad.
One of them was before the next board meeting when we'd have a chance to, to talk. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you, board members for the diversions. Uh, HCU and HE reports. Not sure who would like to go first.
Candy up here. Um, only one, sorry. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So, okay. Good evening, school board. Chair Watson, Superintendent Scott and Cabinet Good evening, school board. Chair Watson, Superintendent Scott, and cabinet members. I am Melody Hanson, President of Hillsborough Classified United, and I am here tonight on behalf of our classified workforce. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and tonight I wanted to begin by recognizing our school board members for the work you are doing on behalf of our students, staff, and community. First, to our student representatives. Representative. The other one's left. Thank you for committing time to this role. It is a joy to hear you share your accomplishment accomplishments each month and to see you advocate on behalf of your peers. Your experience and perspective are critical to the decisions that our board makes. Thank you for reminding us all why we are while we are here and why we do the work that we do. To the school board, thank you for your faithfully represent, for thank you for faithfully representing our community in your work. We appreciate the difficulty you face balancing the needs of students, parents, and staff in the decisions that you make. We are particularly grateful for the collaboration and mutual respect between the school board and Hillsborough Classified United. Thank you for listening to the needs of our employees and for partnering with us to improve working conditions for all classified staff. To Chair Watson, a special thanks for your leadership to the board during this unique seasons in our district. We understand that the search for a new superintendent requires a lot from you and from the other board members. And we thank you for your commitment to that task and to our community. As we reflect on Mike's legacy in this district and begin the search for a new leader to guide us in the coming years, we urge you to remember the impact this role will have on our community. Our new superintendent will not only shape a generation of HSD learners, but their vision will define our workplace culture for years to come. With this in mind, we urge you to choose a leader who is invested in nurturing the partnerships we have built between HSD, HCU, and HEA. Navigating post-COVID staffing shortages will require creative solutions and an investment in growing our current workforce through classified career pathways and programs. We encourage you to choose a leader who is willing to make that investment on behalf of both students and staff so that we can attract and retain qualified staff who will be proud to be HSD for many years to come. As I wrap up my comments this evening, I want to again thank our school board for the work you are doing through this transition. Thank you for taking this process seriously and for creating opportunities for stakeholders feedback through this search. We look forward to continued partnerships with all of you, and we thank you for your time this evening. Thank you. Good night.
Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Thomas, fellow board members, student Superintendent Scott, and the administrative leaders. We hope your New Year is off to a great start. The winter break provided a much-needed respite for, as our members are busy wrapping up the final days of our first semester. Since nineteen eighty-six since nineteen eighty-six, the nation has officially recognized Martin Luther King Jr. on the third Monday of January. During my upbringing, he was legendary in our household. But this year means so much more to me, so I'm in my inaugural year as HEA president. It is important that we do not take his work for granted. One of the most overlooked aspects of Dr. King's life and career was his strong support with the labor unions, calling them America's first anti-poverty program. HEA's Anti-Racist Anti-Bias Teacher Coalition has made it a priority to share Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy with our building reps via mini professional development session segment during our rep council meeting. We've also shared resources to help enrich lesson planning with our members in our January newsletter. This year, we've also been hard at work in collaborating with our school district to advocate for sped educators, students, and their families. A joint HEA-HSD Student Services workload committee was formed in December to review caseloads as well as address workload needs and potential solutions. To fulfill the contract language, the committee is currently working to gather feedback from special education staff via survey for the purpose of support. HEA is also working in collaboration with our Human Resources Department to fulfill House Bill twenty sixteen. House Bill twenty sixteen ensures all new hires access to their union. For the first time in our association's existence, we're holding mid-year new hire orientations. Since August twenty-third, our district has hired six to seven new educators. To meet the requirement of this new law, we are working diligently to meet all new hires in person, which is also a requirement. Our goal is to help them learn more about who we are, what we do, as well as inform them of the vast benefits from professional development opportunities to discounts available to them as union members. HEA has finally received and reviewed all of our school discipline plans that were due prior to the start of the school year. It is our goal to continue working in collaboration with our admin teams along with our building reps to support our educators and students. Our goal is that our discipline plans will raise our standards of expectation of our students' behavior. We must work together to ensure these plans are not forgotten, but upheld as an effective way to improve our schools overall. Every educator and every student should feel safe, included, and valued in our schools so that quality instruction and learning can take place. In my opinion, this will increase educator retention and improve our graduation rates. It is vital, not only for the sake of instruction, but it's vital for everyone's safety that our students are where they're supposed to be during the school day. We are aware of the misconduct that takes place on our campuses, and it's frustrating that educators currently don't feel supported if they intervene as they're not witnessing any improvement or recourse. However, it is our hope that our collaborative efforts with discipline plans will be revisited at semester as a type of reset to improve our building's culture and climate. I plan to support our members by making site visits, and my goal is to meet with members in person to learn what resources and supports are needed to improve their working conditions. As our district is searching for our new superintendent, I've been asking our members what qualities they hope to see that our new leader will possess. I look forward to sharing these responses along with our HEA team in our upcoming stakeholder meeting next week. February is also National Thank You Month. It is fitting that it is also School Board Appreciation Month. HEA would like to thank you, our school board members, for your dedication to education. To honor you, we are making a donation of two hundred dollars to the Oregon Education Foundation in your name. The OEA Foundation has purchased countless pairs of eyeglasses, provided many students with winter coats, paid for dental work and doctor visits, fitted new shoes on lots of little feet, and even replaced a broken bedroom window. When it's all said and done, the OEA Foundation works to ensure that the physical, social, and emotional needs of students do not stand in the way of success in our schools. Lastly, I would like to get to know you all better. I hope we can get together in the near future, informally and visited over coffee or tea about our hopes and goals without an agenda and the formality of Robert's rules. Thank you.
She knows how big I am on Robert's rules. Alright, next up is our students time. We decided who would like to go first. She's looking around.
Um I'm just really excited that the semester is about to end and, you know, get a fresh new start on a new semester. Um you know, taking uh three APs, one honors, and two dual credits is a little stressing. But to be honest, I can't live without stress, so thank you, stress. Um yeah, I love being here with you guys. It's really amazing. Um thank you to all the schools, to everyone. It's a really been a pleasure and an honor just being here and, you know, sharing my voice. Um yeah, thank you.
Um I don't really have much of an update. I mean, I do, but that is for later on in my speech. Um I just wanna thank you guys all for this opportunity of being here. I know I say this a lot. Um but recently, to the great fine, I guess my name has gotten out there and I got offered an internship to law firm, which is really difficult to get without a undergraduate or a law degree. So as not even graduating high school, it's pretty proud of myself. Um but yeah, I have my mock trial competition February twenty-fifth at the Washington Courthouse, so that is all I have to update.
Mike, you are up.
So Reedville Elementary was built during the Great Depression and I don't remember because I was so young, but uh thank you, Casey, for that. Your humor will be reflected in your evaluation, you know. So um I did want, so I did, the thing I really wanna talk about is our grad rates, but that information is embargoed for two more days. So we will send that information out to you at the end of the week and we'll have an opportunity for Andrea to share a little bit um more in-depth on this during our next board meeting. But uh suffice to say, the information's good. Our improvement um from last year to this year is excellent. And uh good things are happening with our grad rates. So I did, I there's the teaser for you. Um I also wanted to spend some time talking about you folks who do such good work in our community and as I was thinking about what it takes to be a board member. Um so you get to run any election, knock on hundreds of doors, if not more, um spend hours and hours doing it, spend your own, spend your own money doing it. And then after that exhausting election, if you're successful, you get the privilege of making some really difficult decisions. Uh maybe have to do with the pandemic or budget, or you do some lobbying and you, hours and hours of volunteering, all for zero dollars in pay. So the pay that you do get, I hope that you feel the appreciation. Um there's many times where you get to see students being successful, whether it's during a school visit or whether it's our um student was participating in the apprenticeship tonight. That was, that was fun to see him in action. Um periodically, you get to have a school lunch with a kid. Um you make a huge difference in the community. And every January, you get a bunch of T-shirts and lanyards. And so even though those items are small, please know that our appreciation for you is huge. We appreciate what you do um every day and just thank you. You're you're greatly appreciated.
Start out there and work this way, I suppose.
I think, I I think that I can say that everybody on here that serves is passionate about education and you give up your evenings to be here and your free time to volunteer and um I'm so grateful to serve with all of you, so happy uh Board Appreciation Month. Um and I also just want to um be thankful for our student reps. I think it was like a dream along, you know, a few years ago when I got on the board that one day we would have student reps on our board and that it's come to a reality. And this is like our, I don't know, is it our third or fourth, maybe, uh cohort of students? And um whenever I go to OSBA meetings and talk to other board members and they're like super passionate about having students be centered and their voice be centered and students be um you know, at the table when we're making decisions and and I always get like kudos about like our district and how we have students on our board. And I'm like just so excited and proud of us for um being ahead of the curve and like leading by example and um just being intentional about making space for students. So thank you to your, to the board, passports as well for their vision and their just push to get this to happen because I'm always hearing how wonderful it is to have. And and so many of our students, just like you mentioned today about, you know, having that internship, so many of our student reps have gone on to do great and amazing things. And so I'm just so proud of you all.
Well, good evening again to everyone and thank our audience members for being here. Uh again, thanks to the staff or the admin staff. You guys are great um answering my questions and and pointing me to resources. Uh I too agree. I appreciate the opportunity to serve this community and to work with um my colleagues here on the board. Thanks to all the schools and uh folks out there that sent all the swag. I feel like I need a wagon to carry it out. But appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Um first, I wanna start by saying, oh, I know, I already have it on.
Oh, it's so cool.
It's so warm. Great. Um wanted to thank all the presenters tonight. It was, it was really exciting to hear the strategic plan update um and even the apprenticeship update upstairs. Um and I wanna give a particular shout out to the uh the course proposals. I think it takes an incredible amount of research and planning and even personal passion that these educators bring when they bring these course proposals to us. And I ju- I just wanna recognize that um and the fact that even years and years, you know, go on and we still have new courses being proposed, I think just goes to show the 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 innovation and even the creativity that our educators are still dedicated to providing the best, you know, up to up to speed um information and and course options for our students is is absolutely incredible. So thank you for the educators who have who have come forward to bring forward these course proposals. Really excited to dive deep into that. Um and then, yeah, thank you all for just the love that you have shown us um this month and um I have a lifetime supply of lanyards at home, so this will go to to add to that. Um so you know, really appreciate it. And it has absolutely been a privilege to serve in this position for the last four years. I can't believe it's been four years. Um and I'm excited to share that I will be seeking uh reelection for my seat this upcoming May, and it will be an exciting um what would you call it? Spring. Um my second baby is due in April, so it'll be a very, very exciting uh spring, but I I am excited to uh to officially announce and of course file. Thank you for the reminder. Put it in my calendar now uh to file in February. Thank you. That is all.
Yeah, thank you to both of our our union leaders today for those informative reports, particularly um I'll be interested to hear the results of your site visits. Those interesting, those issues you're dealing with. I'm I'm glad you're collaboratively on top of it. Forward to hearing about that. Just in brief, uh we talked today about a world history course. So my mind turned to, I was recently watching a documentary, a really interesting one about the pace of technological change over the past hundred years compared to the rest of human history. And from the Wright Brothers to the moon landing and then to what I've experienced in my lifetime, the internet has changed social and information relationships and experiences just radically. And it, I think sometimes we get caught up a little bit in the negatives and the downsides and the challenges of that. But I think when I think about what we're doing is a school district preparing young people to meet those challenges, but also to seize on the opportunities that we have right now. It's it's really a thrilling, exciting time uh for young people to be coming forward to make their mark in the world. And so I just wanted to sound a note of optimism that what we're doing is really important and uh exciting. And it's a great time to be working with young folks and so I thank all our educators and it's been a a special honor these past few months to to have some small role as well as a board member and working with all these fine folks. So thank you.
Um thank you to school bus drivers. And oh, by the way, if somebody tells you that there's like some weird lady like waving, that that would be me. I'm always waving. I don't know what I think that's going to do, but I, it makes me feel good. And the school counselors and the teachers and administrators, thank you. We can't do this without you. And if I could just win that Powerball, I'm telling you, we would have the richest teachers in this district. I'm just telling you. Um from the heart, I have to share with you recently that the board received a letter from a district parent as we frequently do. Um I deeply appreciate living in a society that allows for our freedom of speech, of most expression. However, this level, this particular letter let me a little, left me a little bit disturbed and a little bit horrified. Um I looked at the calendar, checked it was twenty twenty-three, and my comments today are are the expression of my First Amendment rights response to that letter. Um educational equality is is based on the principle that each student receives what is required for them to achieve success with regard to allocation of resources, opportunity, treatment, and access. In fact, one of our goals is to graduate all the students ready to succeed in a diverse, local, national, and global community. To this end, one of the ways that we engage with families to get input on district programs and policies is gathering input from those families. is gathering input from those families and students through their parent advisory committees. They're called PACs. This helps us engage with families and students who identify or who may identify as Black, Indigenous, and/or otherwise people of color. HSD is proud to have three of these kinds of organizations. We have one for Latinx PAC, we have a Native American PAC, and we have the latest PAC, which is the Black Village Family Advisory Committee. The letter that left me so, also so troubled inferred that because we support and encourage the existence of these parent advisory committees in our district, that we were advocating and supporting segregation, and I'm throwing up my air quotes. Among students and families, the letter went on to specifically call out the Black Village Family Advisory Committee that I was very privileged to have a finger in helping to evolve. This was the letters, the letter writer's shining example of the board's support of segregation. Sadly, the letter went on to suggest great error on the part of a teacher who had the audacity to display a rainbow flag outside of their classroom with the words "safe space" up under it, apparently furthering the segregation they were so offended by. Perhaps it was the word, I don't know, but I couldn't let that one go. I have officially grown weary of the thoughts, ideology that make people feel comfortable in re-characterizing methods of support and encouragement to minority groups as weapons of mass destruction to a particular dominant culture. Let me be clear. I am neither left or right. I am a human being and I walk upright in this world. I am not woke. I have been and am awake since October eighteen, nineteen sixty-five, or until God so decides to choose to call me home. I am not a Republican or a Rhino or a Liberal or a Democrat. However, I am concerned by my upbringing, my parents, my education, and my life choices. I do not support segregation, but have actively fought against segregation whenever I encountered it in this very interesting life journey of mine. We are mammals, and by nature we congregate in groups. Imagine that. When we have a choice, we do sometimes choose to gather with those who are most like us or in similar situations. Every species does this. By the way, Black Lives Matter never meant that other lives didn't matter. It was a strong reminder that Black people are part of the fabric of this country and that our lives matter too. No human should be considered an alien or illegal. Perhaps if we fixed and funded the immigration system, perhaps everybody would know of the efficient way to become a citizen of this country or know how to legally enter it. Science is real, and love really, really does mean love. Loving my neighbor and my fellow men isn't restricted by who they choose to share their love with or how they choose to self-identify. I am proud of this board. I proud, I proudly stand on the achievements and the challenges of the prior boards. We are not perfect. We are humans, and we share this earth until we destroy it. I am HSD proud.
I don't know how I follow that. Stick to my notes. Uh, I want to thank Nutrition Services for the great, uh, meal they provided for us upstairs. Um, appreciate them doing that. Tech Services, again, thank you for all your help on every single board meeting, and I hope that your, the head of your department gets well soon. Um, is it too late for people to participate, to let you know they want to participate in the HSF Gala? No, okay. So just reminders, the Hillsborough Schools Foundation Gala is February, yeah, thank you, twenty, I was, February twenty-fifth. Um, it's a great event. Uh, if you have the opportunity to participate, um, the district will, I'm very uncomfortable with the district paying for me to do stuff, but the district will pay for your ticket if you want to attend, so, uh, you know, come out and support HSF. It's awesome. Let Beth know, let Beth know if you want to attend. She's the one coordinating. Um, if you check your district email, you will see something I brought up last meeting that, uh, there's a link that is verified by our tech department to be a valid link to fill out your financial disclosure form. Um, so Michelle, you registered us or whatever, registered something?
Uh, thank you. They have, uh, they being the state, has a new requirement that all school board members need to, um, submit their statement of economic interest by, I believe, March fourteenth. They have a new web system where there's a jurisdictional contact. That would be myself. I, uh, went through the training and was able to assign you guys as our representative members. And so you should be getting an email to your HSD email, and, um, we'll follow up with a kind of a generic template, letter of instructions for you as well. Um, but thank you, Mark, for bringing that up. It's not spam.
Oh, so that email, we're not supposed to click on that. You've already done that. We'll get a different one?
We'll get you one with some instructions.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
That, that was system-generated because you were assigned.
Gotcha. All right. So look forward to filling out your statement of financial interest. Um, I want to thank like, uh, the community for stopping me in hallways and on streets and, uh, saying, one, they appreciate us on Board Appreciation Month, which always surprises me, but it's great. Um, but, uh, being specific about their comments on, uh, our thought, the thoughtful way we are conducting the search for Mike's, uh, I replace, for our next superintendent. Um, the, I think, you know, uh, we're not, we don't really know how many people watch all the time. We're not super dialed in all that kind of, but I think people are aware of the intentionality and, uh, how conscientious we've been in throughout the process. So, you know, keep it up. She and you are indeed going to have a very busy spring. So, um, so yeah, just, yeah, just want to let you all know that I've heard comments from the community, uh, thanking us for our efforts on that front as well. Um, and Board Appreciation Month, I want to appreciate all y'all and all the boards that came before us, like, uh, really, um, from land bank to policy to whatever, it's been very clear, especially over the last couple of weeks and months, as we've done this superintendent search, just how great a position our previous board members have put us in. Um, so hopefully we will continue to do that for them and keep putting them in a great position going forward. So, thank you, everybody, and thanks to all of the schools that, uh, provided stuff. You will see me wearing that frequently at Saturday Market and Tuesday Market and all that other kind of stuff when the sunshine comes out, a hell of a sunny day.
Good thing.
Uh, and I was reminded that our next board meeting will be on Oregon's birthday, February fourteenth. So I'll see you on February fourteenth, Oregon's birthday. We are adjourned.